Thank you, everybody, for attending. This is the Subcommittee on Health and Environmental Affairs of Fall River City Council. And I am going to read the open meeting law. There we go, pull this up. Just give me one second here. All right. I like to read this word for word, so there's no problems. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmission are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and acknowledged and permissible. I'll also make a point that FRGTV is recording this online and on broadcast television. So going to the agenda here.
I may, if I may, call the roll?
Oh, yeah, a roll call, please.
Counselor Peckham? Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah.
Chairman Lee?
Here. And heading over to the agenda. So the first item is citizens' input. And I will read the first one here is from Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, 02720, Fall River City Council Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs, January 28, 2021, citizens' input. Good afternoon, members of the City Council Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs. I wish to speak on some matters facing our community. First of all, this committee has discussed in the past, as it was a campaign promise to introduce a composting program, the Fall River. I suppose that it is a promise that has not been fulfilled. The city has already used grant funding to buy composting bins. Where are the composting bins? And why can't the city take advantage of the opportunity to start a marketing campaign to promote composting at home? If the community cares oh so much about composting and lowering costs in the city, let's start that, let's get everyone together, let's utilize FRGTV and get the information on composting to the people. Secondly, the committee is the Health and Environmental Affairs Committee, and the committee has not held any meetings on COVID-19. That is a shame. Lastly, I wish to state my disappointment in a major issue happening in our community. The superintendent's alleged misconduct is placing our city in a jeopardizing situation legally, with the taxpayers and the city possibly footing the bill, potentially because of the superintendent and the failure of the school committee to act. So why is Councillor, why is City Councillor Trot Lee holding meetings with others, with the superintendent, to discuss this meeting? This action places the city and the city council more at risk legally, and the city council Trot Lee asked out of place for a city council and acted recklessly and irresponsibly. Thank you very much for your time, respectfully submitted, Colin Dias. Just to, just to point out the composting part, since this is the Health and Environmental Affairs, I don't really have anything to say about the, the other stuff. But in regards to the composting, composting has been talked about here, but it also was talked about in, in, in detail at the August 13, 2020 meeting. And a lot of the things that is being rehashed in this citizens' input was actually already put forth in August 13, 2020. And I, and I actually was able to pull up a lot of the documentation that I provided that day. So on, on, on section five of our agenda, I will bring back that to the conversation. And I think that actually some of these are questions that can be answered. In regards to COVID-19, it would be redundant for me to have a meeting because the mayor's office and the Department of Public Health is consistently every single day putting information out there. It would, it would just, I'm not really sure what I would add to that. I think the public is definitely getting informed on a daily basis about COVID-19. Onto the next one. Mr. Joseph F. Carvalho from 575 Eastern Avenue, Fall River, Massachusetts, 02723, to the Environment and Health Committee as the Special Projects Director for Green Futures. We will need explicit details as to the plan by Republic Services to bring 1 million tons of lightly packed fill to the dump. Specifically, is Republic Services to be the defining entity for exactly what, quote, lightly impacted, unquote, fill is determined to be? What will Mass DEP's role be in examining the fill? And how often, given the vast scope of 1 million tons of fill being placed at the dump and posing an absolute threat to our drinking water? Where does Republic Services place 1 million tons of fill exactly? And most importantly, most importantly, what monitoring and inspection measures will the city of Fall River be implementing to ensure that our water supply is adequately and thoroughly protected? Joseph F. Carvalho, 575 Eastern Avenue, Fall River, Massachusetts. So that question, I believe, will be answered throughout the process, throughout this session. Item, items one and two are going to be addressing many, much of that. And we do have a representative of Republic here today to answer Republic-related questions. And I also have, actually, I've, I've had some questions from some other people contact me to ask some questions about traffic-related issues with the 1 million tons. So we'll be able to hash that as we move to the next item on the agenda. And now that we talk about that, I will move on to the next item on the agenda. So item, I'm sorry, resolution two, or item two on the agenda, Colleen?
Yes, would you like me to read?
Please.
Item number two is a resolution from Counselor Trot Lee that stated, whereas many concerned residents have questions regarding the proposed soil management project to be conducted by Browning Ferris Industries, Inc., which was presented to the City Council Committee on Finance on October 27, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convened with representatives from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to discuss the oversight of this project. It was adopted, it is December 1st, 2020.
So, um, with this, I, I think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong to my colleagues, because resolution, the resolution for item two and item three are pertaining to Mass DEP information, is it appropriate to combine the two items together so that they can have the floor and give us all the information? Would that be appropriate?
You could, if you so choose.
Okay, would anyone like to make that motion?
I would motion that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we're going to combine the two items together for two and three. And on that, I would like to, oh, you know what? Because we're on Zoom, I think we have to do a roll call.
Yes, I'm, I'm the motion to take items two and number three together. Counselor Peckham?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes. So, um, with that, with that being said, I, I give the floor to, to Mass DEP, whoever, however order you'd like to go. And afterwards, I'd like to pose a question, a couple of those questions to the representative from Republic. So, um, just to give people information on who are listening and watching this, Mass DEP gave us a PowerPoint. I'm not sure if we're able to follow that on here on Zoom, but anyone who wants to see the information can request that from the city clerk's office. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, City of Fall River. Chairman Trot Lee, Counselor Christopher Peckham, Counselor Leah Pelletier, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. We wanted to thank you for having us tonight as we're going to be addressing two of the resolutions that came to our office. We started this dialogue back in November, so we're finally here, basically tonight, to discuss fully and to the extent that the committee wishes to discuss these items. Basically, just looking at all the angles with regards to the environmental and health aspects of the project that is being proposed. That's with regard specifically to resolution number two. But before we do that, we just want to say thank you. This is, my name is Millie Garcia Serrano, and I serve as a Regional Director in the Southeast Region, Mass DEP Regional Office. And Fall River is one of our five cities and towns that we provide services. With me tonight, I have my colleague Courtney Rainey. She serves as the Mass DEP Office of Legislative Affairs and Municipal Partnerships Director. I also have Paul Locke, who is our Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Wayside Cleanup, based out of Boston. Also, I have Mark Dakers, who's the Section Chief for the Solid Waste Management Section, based out of the Southeast Region. I also want to thank, in addition to everyone here present today, I also want to thank Senator Michael Rodericks, Representative Carol Fiola, Representative Alan Silvia, and Representative Paul Schmidt for their commitment. They will be the first ones that will pick up the phone, ask questions, whether it's going through Courtney or calling me directly in the Southeast Region. And it's always a pleasure to work with each and every one of them. Also, we really want to thank all of the engagement that we receive all the time from very interested and active citizens. As we know, the City of Fall River is an environmental justice community area. It meets the three criteria, which is based on minority income and English isolation. So it's very important that we open the doors and allow for ample dialogue. With mass fast-moving regulations, ever-changing standards, it's imperative that we have that line of communication, whether it's being able to provide translation services for certain aspects and basically outreach and public involvement. I pride myself in our office, we, that's really our service delivery, based on ensuring that everybody has the information that they need. I do want to say that we work a lot with a lot of active citizens in the city of Fall River. Especially, I, two come to mind, two organizations. The first one would be the Coalition for Social Justice, Sabrina Davis as the Fall River Organizer, and also Green Futures. We work a lot with Mr. Joseph Carvalho. So it's really a pleasure to be able to provide some insight with regards to the first resolution that was written by Chair Trot Lee.
Yep, and, and this is just for people listening in, and we've talked about this, you know, in our, in our discussions. But this is strictly an informative session. This is not in opposition or in support of anything. This is strictly to discuss what Mass DEP's role is in the oversight process to make sure that whatever project is going on at the landfill is environmentally safe.
That is correct, and Mass DEP is not the project proponent, so that is a perfect comment. Mass DEP is clearly in an oversight role, as we will be describing. So with that, I, I was wondering with regards to rules of engagement and how you want to run the question and answer session. Would you like for us to go through the presentations? The first one is going to be fully focused on the City of Fall River/BFI project that's being proposed. We can run through the presentation and then hold questions for the end, or if you feel more comfortable, we can always stop, answer the questions, and continue moving forward.
I, I believe that it would be more fluid for, you know, immediate questions that a councillor has, you know, we'll respectfully, you know, intervene there. I, you, you did an hour meeting with me over the phone with all, with everyone here about a month and a half ago. I, I got the answers that I needed from this, but I may just re-ask those questions, so that way the public is, is aware of what's going on. But I, I believe, I looked through this PowerPoint ahead of time. I think everything that you talk about should be sufficient to explaining the process of what you are doing and, and to make sure that our water is safe and, and the landfill situation is not going to be a hindrance on, on our environment.
Terrific. So with that, I wanted to say for Mass DEP team, I think, Mark, we have the latest version or Paul. We have the version of the PowerPoint, and I think we may be able to share it as we speak.
Yeah, great, right.
So while Paul is setting up, I'm just going to quickly do a quick bio. Paul directs the Massachusetts Site Cleanup Programs, including emergency response activities, marine oil spills, natural resource damage assessment and restorations, and the Brown Fields Program. Paul started working as a Risk Assessor at the Mass DEP Office of Research and Standards in 1987, but moved over to the Wayside Cleanup Program in 2004. And I'm, this is a quote, "He continues to be obsessed by the regulatory question, how clean is clean enough?" A former chemist from Harvard College and fairly civil engineer from Tops University, Paul has also taught science in West Africa, developed photos in Cambridge, cross-matched blood in Boston, and scooped ice cream in Brigham's. So with that, I hand over the floor to Mr. Paul Locke.
Uh, thank you, Millie, and I'm always amazed that I can get people to read that bio. So I'm going to speak first about the general policies that Mass DEP has in place for managing soil and kind of some of the choices that we've made through that. And then that will lead to the more specifics that Mark Dakers will speak about this particular project. So, uh, oops, I make sure curse is over there. Here's my contact information, as with kind of all of us, firstname dot lastname at mass.gov, unless there's an exception. So it's paul-locke@mass.gov. Feel free to send any questions. And that's not only for the people, the councillors present today, but anybody here in the, in the community who has questions about how all of this plays out, particularly general questions about soil management, I'm more than happy to, to field them. So why do we talk about soil? It's, this is not unique or unusual. You're the project in Fall River. Whenever we have a large development or redevelopment project going on, it usually involves the movement and the management of large volumes of soil, whether, from one perspective, excavating and removing the soil and figuring out where to put it, or the need to import and use soil as fill in order to create an appropriate layout for the, the particular project. The questions that we hear a lot, and you know, people, you know, do and should ask, where's the soil coming from? What's in the soil? Who is overseeing all of this? And, you know, the basic question of, is it safe? And that, is it safe? You know, the concerns people have, and what I've heard here as well, is, could whatever's in the soil get into the water that we drink? The air that we breathe, or the, the dirt that we play in or, or garden in? All of these are questions that we've, you know, struggled it over the, with over the years to make sure that the soil management approaches that we put in place try to answer or get the answers to all of these questions before the soil is actually used. So one caveat, before I get into this slide, you'll notice it does say that this is an artist's rendering. And, you know, this is my, you know, not really artistic view of, of a landfill that has been capped. And, you know, I make no pretense of trying to actually describe this particular landfill. But here, we're talking about a post-closure use of a capped landfill. So we're talking about it as a modified COM15 approach. And, and I'll explain most of these words in a second. But I refer to it as modified simply because it's being, taking our soil management policies laid out in a, a policy called COM15 and applying it to a landfill where it's, that is also regulated by our solid waste program. So there is a, a merger of kind of different programs and regulatory approaches, and we have to make sure that all of the requirements from both approaches are met. So at a typical landfill, you have the trash underneath. When that closes, a certain amount of grading and shaping needs to be done to prepare the surface for the actual cap that will prevent infiltration of rainwater and protect, protect the landfill. So we look at an input soil for that grading and shaping process using a, a policy we refer to as COM97. It's a Commissioners' Level Policy issued in 1997. That's the code for all of these. And when you get the correct grades and the shape, a cap is put over that. And, and then above the cap is usually a layer of clean soil, clean cover that is there to protect the cap. You don't, and you'll, you'll notice in landfills across the state that they get mowed. You, you don't want trees or structures burying down into the cap and disturbing the cap. So you're protecting that cap. What we're talking about here, and again, artist rendition, not necessarily to scale or the exact proposal. But we often get proposals to reuse these landfills in some beneficial ways. We have landfills in Massachusetts where there are playing fields, ball fields on top of the landfill. We have a lot of landfills that have solar panels on top to generate electricity. And whether it's ball fields or solar panels or some other use on, on a land, on a closed cap landfill, there are a couple of things that you need to keep in mind. One is, you have to prepare the surface so that it's appropriate for whatever that future use is. And you want to make sure that that cap is protected, that there's, you know, depending upon what the uses are and what's going to happen, that there's sufficient layer, sufficient depth to protect the cap that's protecting the landfill. So here, we're talking about bringing in soils under COM, the policy COM15, a policy issued in 2015 that kind of regulates or directs the importation and management of, of soil for these large development projects. And I'm going to talk over the next few slides about what COM15 actually is. There is a webpage on DEP's website that talks about all things soil, whether it's the reclamation soil projects. You'll notice down in the, the lower left-hand side, there's dotted red line. These are what we call COM15 projects. So if you click on that link, it will bring you to a page that describes in a lot more detail. There are also other soil management activities going on, whether it's reusing soil at landfills that, COM97 policy, managing soil along proposed rail trails. Soil is a big topic in Massachusetts, as in other states, and we have a number of ways that we make sure that the management of the soil for various activities is done in an appropriate fashion. There's also a, a video that you might find useful and informative that goes into a bit more detail about how we look at soil and why we embarked upon the COM15 process. That's further down that page as well. The front page of the COM15 policy came out August 28, 2015, and that's the URL for it. The reason it came about was a section of the FY15 Budget, Section 277, and I'm not going to read all of those small words in detail, but it was a directive from the legislature in an outside section of the budget that charged DEP to come up with a way of essentially regulating or managing soil that was being used specifically in that case for the reclamation of quarries, sand pits, and gravel pits. Those are activities that require a large amount of soil, and people had concern about the type of soil and the nature of the soil that was being brought in for those purposes. When we talk about modified COM15, it's using the same approach for other types of redevelopment projects that are similar in the sense that they are bringing in large amounts of soil for particular uses. We've used this approach on farms that need to expand level farm areas. This approach has been used for expanding a cemetery in Tewksbury and clearly for quarries, sand pits, and gravel pits that need to be filled, but also for projects like this of, at existing capped landfills where the, the landfill is being looked at for a new and different use, and soil needs to be imported to support that new use. The important words in, in that long paragraph that we saw previously that come out is that we were given a lot of flexibility to develop either guidelines, standards, regulations, or procedures, whatever it would take to, to manage the soil appropriately. We're told to look at the suitability of soil for these specific purposes. And the key thing, and these are terms that are familiar to us as regulators in the environmental field. It was directed that, you know, these projects cannot, should not pose a significant risk. And that's usually shorthand for, in my program, we talk a lot about significant risk of harm to health, safety, public welfare, and the environment. So we have to make sure that it's protective, you know, no matter how you look at it. We're directed to look at everything from the transportation operations and foreseeable future use of these projects and look at things that might require a permit or things that would not require a permit and could be done without DEP oversight and look at things that would require some form of local approval and input. So those are the important features of that. The DEP's approach has been looking on the, the reuse of the soil for beneficial purposes, and we try to draw a distinction between these projects and what would be considered disposal of soil, getting rid of waste material. Disposal and getting rid of waste material and putting things in landfill, inside landfills, not on top of them, are things that would generally be dealt with in the solid waste program and those regulations. And the, the top part, they're developing guidance and approval process for the appropriate use of soil that contains some level of hazardous constituents. Put hazardous in quotation marks here. And one thing I, I do like to stress in all of these talks, when I talk about soil management, is soil is made up of stuff. And people are legitimately concerned about soil containing excessive amounts of oil or hazardous material, the terms that we use in my program. But we also have to recognize that soil is made up of, of constituents that are naturally occurring. It's organic materials, minerals. So if you measure, if you take a sample of any soil in my backyard, your backyard, a pile that's down the road, you will find measurable levels of metals and some organic materials. And the question that's really, the, the question at the heart of all of this work is, okay, soil is made up of chemicals. At what level should we be concerned about the concentrations of those materials? There's a lot of natural background material. Should we begin being concerned above background? Should we begin being concerned about concentrations above certain standards? So that is what this process is trying to identify, kind of what are the numbers? What are the levels where we would be concerned? What are the levels that we would not allow this material to be used in certain situations? And when is it really people trying to get rid of, in dispose of soil rather than beneficially reuse it? And in looking at that difference between what is it reuse and what is it disposal? Looking at reuse, the receiving location is for a specific project, a development or reclamation project. The soil is actually needed for a particular use. It's not just speculative. It's, it's not just, oh, I have a hole in the ground, I'm going to fill it. But we want to see that there's some end purpose for it. And we also want to see that, you know, these projects have input from the local community. That it's not just one person deciding that, oh, I'm going to bring it, oh, I'm going to have somebody pay me to take a bunch of soil onto my property. That the movement of large amounts of soil kind of raises eyebrows, raises questions, raises concerns. We want to make sure that there are forums for those concerns to be aired, invented, and appropriately addressed. Disposal, on the other hand, is just people getting rid of unwanted discarded material and dumping it somewhere. And, you know, these kinds of projects are not, you know, we don't view as disposal of unwanted soil. This is reuse of soil that has been vetted, assessed, and determined to be appropriate for the uses being put. DEP approval is necessary because, you know, first and foremost, we don't want any new hazardous waste disposal sites. That's what I refer to here as a 21E site. I, I apologize for the shorthand. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 21E, is the law that gives DEP the authority to require cleanup of hazardous waste sites. That's my program. And I don't want any new sites. I would like to be put out of the business of cleaning up hazardous waste sites by not having them created anymore. We want to make sure that the soil that's being used from these projects are coming from known locations and that they are well-characterized. We know what's going into these projects. Because if you have large volumes of soil moving around, it is easy to have it mismanaged. And if mismanagement of soil creates large problems, you know, the easy ones to see would be things like, you know, filling of wetlands when they shouldn't be filled. Bringing contaminated material that creates sites, create risk in the, the surrounding environment. So we want to regulate, we want oversight, we want clear requirements for these projects and enforceable requirements for these projects to prevent those kinds of problems. Local input is necessary so that- Local input is necessary so that, you know, any concerns that the local community has can be, like I said, raised, vetted and appropriately addressed. It doesn't mean that everybody's concerns will completely be satisfied because, as you know, that's usually not possible. But we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to have their concerns raised, heard and that there's a reasonable response to those concerns that that are expressed. And this way, we make sure that these projects are real, they're viable projects that are there for some beneficial use. Okay, the nuts and bolts of all of this, this COM 15 policy comes down to come and talk to people early and often. The first bullet there is talk to the Mass D E P Regional Director. That would be Millie Garcia Serrano that you heard from earlier in the Southeast Region. But that applies in all of our four D E P regions. We, whenever these projects come along, and you'll see how many of them there are in a second. They they bring high level D E P attention to make sure that the regulation oversight and the agreements that are made and the approvals that are there are made with the highest level and the appropriate people being involved. We want people to talk to the municipal officials that are there. And we offer to talk with everybody, either together or separately, as we're doing here today. We want people, the proponents of these projects to be good citizens and be good partners and listen to the local community that they're going to have to be working with and living with over the lifetime of these projects. And as the development is is created and built, the projects that go on into the future, not just the soil management projects. And at the heart of this is a soil management plan or sometimes called a fill management plan that lays out what all the acceptance criteria, all the allowable levels, all the checks and balances and the testing that's required for the soil. All of that is laid out in the soil management plans that require D E P approval before the project can go ahead. So on the web, and the URL is there. We list all of the projects that are approved under COM 15. And the website includes the administrative consent order, that's what A C O stands for. And this is the the mechanism that we're using to approve these projects. We don't have a regulatory process that results in a permit. So the A C O stands and gives us a vehicle to have an enforceable approval. So it's mutually agreed upon a set of requirements that the proponent in D E P signs off on, and it itself is enforceable. So you can see the A C O that has been issued, the approval issued for each of these projects, it's on the web. Should this project be approved, there will be another entry onto this website. And anybody will be able to pull down that A C O and look at it. The soil management plans are posted on the web, so everybody can see what the criteria are, what reports have to be submitted to D E P and what timeframes. And so everybody is clear what the requirements are. They could be, you know, some of these are three parts, they're large, some of them are just a single one. And then the, one of the key features is there's links to the documentation that receive. The approval process and the soil management plan is not the end of of this. The facilities have to submit routine reports and documents that include details about the the amounts of soil that's brought in and the timing and the concentrations and the sampling results. All of that gets submitted to D E P as well. And if you click on on those, you go to our file viewer, you type in the R T N. I don't know if you can see that small, but R T N stands for release tracking number. Each of these facilities is issued a unique release tracking number. It's a way of getting it into our data systems. And you can use that to pull up all of the files for for these facilities. And you'll come up with a page like this from that. And there's a, on the left hand side, you'll see there's a a bunch of transmittal forms, B W R C 126 is the transmittal form that's used to kind of carry these documents into our data systems called E D P. But on the right hand side, you'll see a bunch of PDF documents, links to PDF documents. And those are the periodic reports that are submitted to D E P and sometimes unique reports. And you, then at the bottom, there's a third party inspection letter that was submitted. So everything that's submitted to D E P is submitted through this online electronic middle process called E D P. Once the submit button is hit, it gets submitted to E to D E P. And the public gets to see it online within about 15 minutes or so of the button being hit. It's automatic. It does not go through a screening process with within D E P. Basically, the public gets to see it at the same time D E P staff get to see it. It's important that all of this be transparent, that the information is out there and visible to people who have who, you know, may have concerns about how it's going and whether the the facility is complying with the requirements or not. So we feel transparency in this regard is a key feature of this process. And I want to leave you with one last graphic. And this comes from the video that I recommended earlier. And it makes a lot more sense if you watch the video. But if you look at at these projects, large soil projects can go on with or without D E P approval. Your D E P does not require these facilities to come in and get these administrative consent orders and and get the approval. It could, they could proceed without it. But there are benefits both to the proponents for for doing it and certainly for the surrounding community. As somebody who runs the waste site cleanup program, I want to point out first that if any soil is ever coming from one of our hazardous waste sites, 21 E sites, there are a lot of regulations and a lot of requirements that apply to those sites and that soil is tracked and documented. And that's true regardless of whether the soil goes to one of these COM 15 sites or goes to any kind of generic field project. Also, I would point out for the COM 15 projects, those projects do not take what we would call contaminated soil. Go back to, I say, all soil contains measurable amounts of chemicals because it kept soil is made up of chemicals. But we put limits on how kind of the quality and the nature of the soil used for these projects. And, you know, one of the key features I said before is that we do not want people creating 21 E sites, new hazardous waste sites. So the soil is capped at a level that would not create a new 21 E site. So, but you may, you may get soil coming from 21 E sites. The big difference between the COM 15 project and any generic fill project is that any soil coming to a COM 15 project, like is proposed for this landfill is regulated, it has to be sampled, it has to be shown to meet the the acceptance criteria, it has to be documented, that documentation has to come to D E P. On a generic fill project that does not have one of these approvals, soil can be moved without telling D E P about it. Soil can be accepted without D E P. We have no controls over what happens that if it's coming from a location that's not a 21 E site. So there's a lot more uncertainty there and a lot less control. So we feel overall that this approach of having administrative consent orders used to give approval to these projects results in a kind of more transparency, more oversight and kind of more confidence that the project is being run in a manner that's safe and protective for the surrounding community. And with that, that's the
And and sir, I wanted to add at the end here that you are also providing the progress online on your websites as well. You're providing the updates so everyone can see that on the website. So it's it's, in my opinion, the process was was very thorough, but also the transparency. So people can actually do the the investigating on their own to see how much oversight these these places are are being covered. I wanted to give the floor to my colleagues to see if they had any questions on this. Any questions on this, colleagues? Council of Beckham? Maybe on mute?
Sorry about that. My only question would be, the abutters to this property, the neighborhoods, have they been duly notified of the project and the and the the size of the project that's going to take place in an autumn?
Do you want to answer that or? This is, this is the beginning of the conversation, I think, as Paul Locke described initially. Before this project needs moves forward, clearly with any kind of mass D E P approval, as per memorialized in the administrative consent order, we will not enter into a consent order unless we have a letter from the city that basically articulates that there is public acceptability for this project. So I understand that there's been a prior discussion about this project at a prior meeting, perhaps your committee. This is sort of a follow on to that. And we have been advising and letting the project proponent know that nothing moves until there is that understanding at the local level of what the project is about, any potential impacts associated with the project, whether it's how is this going to run, how many cubic yards or, you know, square footage of impact. Mark is going to talk, Mark Dakers is going to be speaking to what we understand and what has been represented to Mass D E P as the project. But to answer your question, Mass D E P would like to ensure that there is common understanding of this project and we will not enter into an A C O unless we see a letter from whether it's the council or the chief municipal officer, basically articulating that there's been vetting at the public level and there is public acceptability.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, we have to fall back. Council of Palate, you have a question for the group?
How many tons are coming in?
I can answer what the proposal is when I get in there. I'll be happy to. It's my understanding it's 700,000 cubic yards or a million tons.
Now, we already filled some 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 of the landfill already with some kind of, was that DPW's job to? The prior filling of that?
I will talk about the previous project that closed the city's landfill back in 2015 and 19. I think that will, the presentation I'll do will answer all those questions. And if not, at the end, I'll be happy to answer those.
All right, then there's no sense me chasing when you're going to talk about it, so we might as well let you talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Councilor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dakers. It's it's floor is yours on this.
So I'm just going to do a quick intro. Do you want me to just quickly, again, Mark Dakers is a solid waste management section chief for Mass D E P and responsible for permitting, compliance and enforcement activities at solid waste management facilities and recycling operations within the Southeast Region. He's worked with Mass D E P since 1994 in the solid waste and drinking water programs. And prior to joining Mass D E P, Mark worked for S A I C Engineering, Performing Assessment and Remedial Actions at Solid Waste, Hazardous Waste Facilities, and he holds a Bachelor's of Science degree in geology from the University of Rhode Island. Thank you, Mark.
All right, let me just pull up, I'm going to ask Paul if just share off my screen. Hang on one second.
I want to, while you're doing that, Mr. Dakers, I want to add, I believe you were involved in our South End, South End of the City discussion, South End Neighborhood Association discussion on the on the King Philip Mills as well, correct?
Yeah, I have some role in the asbestos program and I think we can talk about that later too. Yes, I do have
We we will, it's not on the agenda, we can, we can, we can have that conversation at another time. But I just wanted to let people know that you have a familiarity with Fall River. And, and, you know, you've, you have, you've gotten your hands dirty here a couple of times, more than a couple of times, for sure.
Yeah, I think I've been working on the Fall River landfill in one piece or another for, let's see, 26 years.
There you go.
Can everyone see my screen? Okay? Okay. All right, I'll start. Good evening and thank you for the invitation to speak at the city council meeting and discuss the reuse of soils at the Fall River landfill. My name is Mark Dakers. I'm the Solid Waste Section Chief. There are recently been questions posed by public officials and residents regarding this proposal to accept soils to grade portions of the Browning Ferris Industries landfill, which I call B F I, and small contiguous landfill that is owned by the city of Fall River in for preparation of a solar array. The primary purpose of this presentation is to provide a general overview of the Massachusetts regulatory requirements as it relates to reuse of soils at landfills, provide background information on the Fall River landfill, the B F I one, and the city's landfill nearby. And we'll happy to answer questions at the end. For those of you not familiar with the history of the B F I landfill and the city landfill, I'll provide a description of the existing site. And then I'll get into a discussion regarding the proposal in front of the city council and Mass D E P's role. Finally, I'll provide a brief review of the results of previous studies regarding the impact of the two landfills on the environment. The B F I Fall River landfill is in an inactive capped enclosed municipal solid waste landfill owned by Browning Ferris Industries. It is on a 200 acre parcel and 126 acres have been used for solid waste filling. All of B F I landfills, the different phases on this site have been capped and closed with final cover systems. And on the next slide, this is our site locusts. And just to give us people an idea where we are, if you're not familiar, this is Taunton River off over here. We have North Whitupah Pond to the southeast. We have the landfill property right here, the different phases. And that will get us started to there. The landfill has been operated in four phases. There's phase one, two and three, and a fourth phase consisting of what we call piggybacks or or landfills over tops of landfills on the side slopes of phase one and two. The phase one and two mound are the oldest mounds. They are in this particular area right here, one is here, phase two is here. Phase three is in the other side, there's a brook that runs between them. Mother's Brook and then a diversion ditch, which is a manmade structure that takes stormwater and provides a line for a sewer line for the city. Phase three is in two lobes on the other side of the brook here and here. Phase three is approximately 30 acres combined and the larger phase one and two is roughly 96. All right, let's see. The B F I landfill is bordered. But I'll zoom in a little bit here. In the center of this slide, there is a small parcel with underlined in red rectangular. That is a parcel that is where the city landfill is, it's roughly 4.4 acres that has been capped. The industrial park. There's an industrial park here, Fall River, there's the other industrial park over here, which is the former airport property. The landfill is also, and then we have the South Coast Life Sciences Park that's over in this location. And we have Route 24 and 79 over here. The B F I landfill, phase one operated from the 1930s to 1981 by the city. The Fall River Landfill, Inc., operated it from phase one from 1981 to 1987. And then Browning Ferris has been the owner since 1987 to present day. The B F I landfill, last lined cell, there are what we call unlined landfills that have no way to collect the contaminants or the leachate, the water that particulates through the waste. Particulates through the waste. Phase one, the initial one was unlined. All phases after that, phase two, phase three are all line cells. And they have to collect the contaminants, collect the leachate and send it off to a wastewater treatment plant for disposal. In all areas, the landfill stopped accepting waste in October two thousand fourteen. B F I ceased waste acceptance and all areas were completed capping by B F I in two thousand sixteen. Initially, when waste was disposed, it was in unlined areas in phase one. There were few environmental protection measures in the early days of this. There were few regulations back then either. Um, and they weren't used to, so the waste um impact of the waste disposal was much larger. Groundwater and surface impacts were not monitored. Phase one was closed in nineteen eighty-nine. And then since then, every um phase, phase two and phase three have liners. Phase two, phase three has what we call. A double composite liner with leak detection. So it's a liner and then there's another liner underneath it that tells us if the first liner leaks. And that's what we say by leak detection. Uh, because the main concern with all landfills is one of the main is leachate. And that's when rainwater precipitation falls on the landfill, it goes through the waste. It picks up contaminants as it moves through the waste. And if the landfill is unlined, it goes out through the bottom into the groundwater, which can discharge the surface water. Or it can run off if there's not controls to keep the storm water in there. Line landfills capture that leachate. And then land landfills that have two liners with leak detection, you have even a higher confidence that that liner is working. B F I has no areas of waste that have not been capped. The B F I landfill has entered what we call our post closure monitoring and maintenance phase. During this period, the owner is required to continue to maintain the final cover systems, the cap. Including the storm water, the leachate system and the landfill gas collection components. B F I conducts inspections, continues to monitor groundwater, surface water and gas um and submit that data to Mast D E P. And since I've been talking about caps a lot or final cover systems, this is a little bit more detail of what it is. From top to bottom, there's a vegetative support layer which consists of loam. Um, and it is grassed, and then below that is a sand drainage layer twelve inches, and that is to collect the storm water. That's clean. We want to not let that get, move that off to storm water collection systems. Um, below that is the geomembrane. That is the line, the cap. That is the a thick plastic, very resistant to puncture. Is what keeps the rainwater from infiltrating into the waste. Um, and below that, we have a gas venting layer that provides a base for that liner. And also a way to collect gas from the landfill. And below that, we have our solid waste.
Just to, just to interrupt just for a minute, um that textured um geomembrane. Uh, is is that, is that degradable in any way, shape or form?
Well, there's been lots of testing. It it it, everything degrades to some extent. Like everything leaks to some extent, but it is, it is designed to, for. A landfill environment to be as resistant as it can. It has. The life is shown anywhere from one hundred to three hundred years for for the liner to work as intended.
And the gas venting, is that uh to be used uh at the city's discretion or is that used in any specific purpose?
Well, besides the gas venting layer, uh this landfill, the larger landfills have gas collection systems. And they put in large wells to collect it. This one collects the gas with a blower to put a vacuum on it. Sends it to a system to actually use the gas for energy. Um, and so i- in in so for two purposes, the the gas is largely methane. So natural gas with some contaminants in it and then it's used to produce electricity.
For the city?
Um, the arrangement, we just require that it be collected. We don't decide how exactly it is done. It is this is Republic's um landfill.
Okay.
They just have to have the permits to collect it and make sure they collect it in efficient way. And safely to protect it from going into the atmosphere or migrating through the soils um into surrounding buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now I'll talk a little bit about the question that came up is the offsite waste area was sometimes referred to. Um, this is a separate parcel of land. It's immediately south of the B F I landfill. It is owned by the city. Um, the city landfill is labeled and often referred to as the offsite waste area being off the waste area that. The B F I landfill um property, it's four point four acres. And it was capped back in two thousand fifteen to nineteen under department's online landfill policy for closure of online landfills. The department put together this policy to help facilitate mainly municipalities to to deal with the costs. Of closing these unlined landfills. I'll discuss a little bit more of the history and the closure information, and I think this will help understand. A lot of the questions I think are coming up are, well, how is this project similar or different to that project that was in two thousand fifteen and nineteen? And I hope this answers those questions. The offsite waste area was discovered in the early two thousands via beyond the property line owned by B F I. And it was on two privately owned parcels. The waste was initially discovered by putting in some leachate tanks by B F I. They reported it to us. The department asked for additional investigations to determine the extent. Is part of the routine assessment process that we do at all landfills. The waste was basically determined to go off the property in a fairly large area. Up to um, I think a total of, you know, uh roughly six or seven acres offsite. The waste was determined to have been disposed when the city of Fall River owned the landfill. So prior to B F I, prior. Based on historical information and test pitting that was done. Basically, the way in this, in two thousand fifteen to address this offsite waste area, the city and B F I. Proposed a landfill closure together. B F I was closing their landfill and capping areas that were contiguous to this area. They had a little bit of waste. They had their line cells to cap and they had a little bit of waste that was discovered on their property. That was um unlined and uncapped. So in order, it made sense economically, technology and and uh it was more feasible to cap them together, they contiguous. So there was no separation in the waste from one property to the other. And basically, so the mast D E P's online landfill policy allows contaminated soils. These are levels uh that are acceptable to go into a landfill to be capped. These are not soils that you would, um, they had the constituents they have in them need to go under a final cover system. And the department has a policy, Paul Locke referred that earlier. It's called COM ninety-seven. Which sets the acceptance criteria of how high, what is the acceptable levels? You can have of constituents in that soil that can go into an unlined landfill, because we're not talking about a line landfill here. We're talking about an unlined landfill with no leachate collection system. So the levels are not as high as a aligned landfill. Mast D E P's policy for this closure specifies the amount of material that is limited to the amount, the need to shape it. We need a five percent grade across the top. Um, that helps shed the storm water and helps you construct the liner. You cannot have a really uneven surface. So you cannot install the liner. Liners have to be seamed. They have to be connected together to make one large um impervious surface. Also, the 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 amount of materials that is allowed to come in is not more than sufficient to pay for it. So the idea you can't take in unlimited amounts to close it. Um, and it does allow a little bit of profit because no one's going to, has to at least be able to do. This, no one's going to do this for a loss of private company potentially. Um, but the idea was to save municipalities, um, help them deal with the costs of closing this. And the costs are fairly significant. An average landfill can cost upwards of two hundred thousand dollars an acre. To close, and that's just the capping. That's not the monitoring. That's not the maintenance. That's not bringing it up to the grades. To prepare it for capping. Mast D E P, the city and B F I entered into a consent order. Um, in two thousand fifteen to close and cap the landfill following department's policy. And that consent order listed the types of materials that could be accepted, the permit submission requirements. The soil testing requirements, the acceptance criteria for the soils. COM ninety-seven was the levels that were allowed to go in there for the soils. And and. Basically set out about a two-year process to close it. Uh, between November two thousand fifteen and November two thousand seventeen, approximately two hundred and ninety thousand cubic yards of soils. Primarily soils were brought into the site to close it. Um, the soils was accepted to grade and shape it. On portions of the city's landfill and portions of B F I landfill. Because to make it one mound to slope it into the other one. That helps control the storm water. It did not make sense to have two mounds. Um, the soils have been placed under the couples cover system. It was capped. They submitted plans for that and they were approved. Um, all the capping has been completed. It was completed in two thousand nineteen and a certification report for department review was submitted. So that is the previous project. That brings us and to the current project. And that, and this is the reuse of soils to facilitate a solar array. Browning Ferris Industries in conjunction with the city have proposed a soil reuse management plan. On the city's landfill and a portion of B F I's landfill to facilitate a future solar array. All the soils are being proposed to be placed within the footprint of those landfills on top of the caps. On slide nine, and I'll zoom in a little bit. The city's landfill is in beige, right? Zoom back out. City's landfill is right is this little portion on this rectangular. The, and then this other area in beige is on Fall River. B F I Republic's landfill and the areas combined is the area where they're proposing to accept the soils. So it's on a southern slope on B F I's phase one area and on the city's landfill, almost on the entire landfill. The soils are proposed to be done over the final cover system. This is a cross section of the proposal from the consultant for Republic. Now zoom in, the area in light brown or beige is the city's landfill. The area in darker brown is the area that's proposed. Um, the soils, the seven hundred thousand cubic yards. And the area in green is the larger, the rest of the waste mass of phase one going up to the plateau area on phase one. As I said, the volume is seven hundred thousand cubic yards over a duration of four to five years. The quality of the soils, as Paul Locke had said, the question is what is the acceptable amount of constituents or contaminants that are allowed? Whether they're naturally occurring or introduced. We call this acceptance criteria. We use these standards reportable concentrations S two, and we refer to them as R C S S two. And R C S, we also use the top three feet of stricter standard R C S one. Soils that don't exceed these accepting criteria are would be acceptable for commercial industrial surface soil. So if you were cleaning up a brownfield site, it's soils that you could leave. An urban site, you could, these are the concentrations you could leave behind in the surface. And our C S one soils are the top three feet. Um, and we just, the solid waste program, in order to give as many options as possible for reuse in the future. We've wanted to do those top three feet of soils um as the cleaner soils. And those would be acceptable for a residential surface of soils. The project is very different from the city's landfill closure um in several important ways. Um, Paul talked about reuse versus disposal. The acceptance of souls under this proposal is not required to satisfy a regulatory requirement. The the previous closure in two thousand fifteen and nineteen, the city had an unlined landfill that was not capped. This Massachusetts solid waste regulations require that it be capped and assessed and remediated to comply. With the solid waste regulation to be protective of the public health, safety and environment. This project is to facilitate a post closure use. There is no obligation. Outstanding compliance requirement with the city or B F I to do this project. So that's one important difference. Um, all landfills owned by the city and B F I have been closed, so there is no requirement. And I'll say the, conceptually, they proposed a uh solar facility on top of this. That would be on the, and it's part of the plans that have been submitted. Um, the department has seen, and I believe the city has seen. On this brown area here. Where they're taking the soils and potentially on the side slopes, the steeper side slopes. Um, roughly a two megawatt facility is what they're talking about. That's about enough for about three hundred homes of power. I think it's important to know, to point out in the current plan to accept soils, they hope to facilitate a solar. Development does not guarantee that it's going to be installed as part of this project. Accepting the soils will create southerly slopes that are ideal for um a ballasted. Um, system for solar. About five to fifteen percent is what is ideal. You can't drive posts in a typical landfill cover system to provide supports for the solar. You have to put heavy weights, basically concrete blocks, so you don't damage the cap. And um putting these soils in that that five to fifteen degrees is what's ideal in terms of cost and installation techniques for installing solar. The proponents have stated to Mast D E P, they think it is hoped that the economics will be feasible for an installation when the soil project is done. But the incentives on the state and federal level do change um quite often and they will need to reevaluate then. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about solar on landfills in Massachusetts. We'll give you, I think, a good perspective of. Where this project fits into the norm or why it had, what advantages or disadvantages it has. Mast D E P encourages that solar installations on closed landfills. Um, landfills have limited reuse potential. And solar energy production is one that can be done um safely and not jeopardize the effectiveness of the final cover system. Mast D E P has approved over fifty post closure use permits in the Southeast region alone. A hundred statewide. The installed systems are producing over a hundred and seventy-five megawatts of power. That's enough to produce um energy for almost twenty-six thousand homes. One advantage to landfill owners is the revenue generated from leasing the land for solar developments. Typically, there is not revenue coming into landfill owners or it it usually does not exceed the amount it costs to maintain the landfill. And for municipalities especially, this has been a very good program of leasing the land to solar developers. Producing clean energy on a site that has little availability. It has also helped the towns, you know, cut the costs. Usually, the landfill goes from costing in the budget to generating revenue in the budget from year to year. Uh, Massachusetts is one of the leaders in producing electricity through solar energy on landfills. Southern facing slopes are advantage for solar in the northern hemisphere. And so this has that going for it. It's a southerly facing slope. The B F I landfill has been generating electricity, as we mentioned before, for landfill gas. That is another advantage it has. The infrastructure to take the energy to transmit it into the grid for people can use it is already there. Um, solar developers find that a very advantageous to the, it can reduce the costs. And what happens with landfills, they start producing less gas with time. And so the, they're not as producing as much energy. And so they can, as that energy decrease, production to the grid decreases, the solar can add back the to it. And raise those um amount of energy the facility is sending. So those are some of the advantages. The department has done, the idea is, we've had other sites come in. Under what we call COM ninety-seven closures like the city did in the past. Where we worked with the owners to say, build the southern slope. Uh, build a plateau area with a southern slope. Um, and grade it and set it all up so that it's large enough to facilitate a solar development. We're not going to require that you do this as part of the project, but you, if you build it, the incentives are there, federal and state to do that. And that has worked in most of the sites that we've done that. Now, I wanted to talk about the acceptance criteria. It's, I think it's really important to understand what the soils. to understand what the soils are not. They're not hazardous waste, which is a definition in our regulation. It's not solid waste. They're not your municipal solid waste. They cannot have bits of plastic and paper and other material and debris in it. It is not COM 97 soils that were used for the previous closure, and they're not remediation waste. These are not wastes that are generated from the cleanup of 21 E sites hazardous waste. The soil constituents that are in there will not be able to exceed this acceptance criteria value for RCS2 soils, which is, think of commercial industrial sites official, and cannot exceed the RCS1 values, which are the superficial soils in a residential setting. And the overlying arching issue between, which is the same, no matter what the site is taking soils, is allowable concentration set for reuse, has to be protective of public health, the environment. Now, we talk about the review process. As Paul Locke mentioned this, the policy we're using was designed for sand and gravel pits. This is therefore a modified version, or hybrid, as I like to call it. The first public part of this process is public participation. That happened in October. That was one of the first meetings that was, the proponents, the city and BFI decided to do the public participation piece. It's a chance for the public to ask questions and receive answers. Meaningful public comment is the term that's used in COM 15 policy, and we follow the same process. The project could be changed based on public comments, or conditions could be imposed, such as hours of operation, traffic, or some of the common issues that local communities and residents will provide input, and the projects will change. And that's what we want. We want the public input. After the public petition process is completed and the community input is documented, Mass DEP will determine if it's adequate. If adequate, we'll enter into the, almost the exact same process as these COM 15 projects. We do administrative consent order. It'll have a soil management plan. It'll lay out the soil testing requirements, soil acceptance criteria, third-party inspection requirements, and it'll lay out timeframes for all those submittals. Mass DEPs plays an oversight role, reviewing and auditing these projects periodically. The inspection reports and soil data are all put online, as Paul said. We do know exactly the same. And administrative consent order does have provisions for penalties for people if they, for the proponents, if they violate that. The proponents will have to submit, what is different about this is because this is on top of landfills, there's a post-closure use permit required for Mass DEP solid waste section. The idea of that permit, the goal is, is to protect the final cover system. Including the stormwater, the leachate, and also you're putting soils on slopes. You have to make sure they're stable and design it appropriately. The post-closure permit decision will include a public comment period. As Millie mentioned, the regional director in the beginning, the city of Fall River is an environmental justice community. We're going to encourage the proponent to meet with that Mass DEP prior to submitting that permit, to discuss how it's going to comply with our environmental justice policy. And that's ending the proposal. And there's a little bit of history on, I've been involved with this project for as long as I pretty much worked at DEP. And I can talk about the assessment findings of all the studies. All landfills, when they close, have to do assessments to show that they, a capping of landfills is the minimum required for all landfills. And you always have to go back and look to make sure that other impacts to groundwater, surface water, sediments, and air are evaluated. This landfill has a lot of studies, 16 studies by BFI over the last 26 years. Currently, there's ongoing data collection. They're collecting groundwater, surface water, landfill gas every four months and submitting that to Mass DEP. The entire facility is monitored by a network of 30 groundwater monitoring wells and 12 landfill gas locations and two surface water locations. Northwood Tupper Pond, a public water supply, which serves the city of Fall River, is located approximately eight tenths of a mile to the southeast. The water supply is in a different watershed, and therefore the surface water from the landfill cannot reach the water supply. So from runoff, if you look at the topography, the way it is, and Ringenback Road was actually put in as part of the industrial park development, actually adds some benefits by making sure that surface water divide keeps the stormwater from the industrial park from going over into the area of Northwood Tupper Pond. The groundwater flow direction and overlying soils out there is in a, overlying, is in a westerly and an northerly direction. It's the opposite way from the pond. And that's been, the groundwater flow direction has been from 16 studies, six consultants, one hired by the city, one hired independently by Mass DEP. All have concluded the same thing. The groundwater flow is away from Northwood Tupper Pond. And additionally, as part of that, there's monitoring wells that are on the areas where groundwater flow does head towards Northwood Tupper Pond. And those monitoring wells are put in there kind of as an extra, just to make sure all the studies, everything we had done confirm. And all the testing of those monitoring wells has never shown any contaminants associated with the landfill.
And I think the person who wrote Citizens Input, who was very concerned about the water supply, this is the area where hopefully they are getting their questions answered on that.
This is a question that has come up many times in terms of the landfill permitting, something I'm very familiar with. And I think if there's one thing that we can say with a high degree of certainty and very good monitoring program, it's that the groundwater flow is not towards there. There's no evidence of any contamination moving at all towards Northwood Tupper Pond, none. Mass DEP categorizes groundwater into three categories. We call them groundwater 1, 2, and 3. The first category addresses the potential of groundwater to be used for, it's a public drinking water supply, drinking water, private wells. Groundwater is considered to be used, if it's kind of being used, is it currently is a drinking water source or potentially, meaning it has the capability of producing enough water to be used for that. And right now, this site, there are no private or public wells down gradient of this landfill where the groundwater flows. The second category, what we call groundwater 2, addresses the potential for groundwater to be a source of indoor air contamination. Groundwater can serve as a source of vaults or organics that gets into indoor air. And Mass DEP established the category 2 to be protective of that. The third category is groundwater 3, which addresses the potential for groundwater to be a source of surface water contamination. Mass DEP assumes all groundwater discharges to surface water, so all groundwater in Massachusetts is considered groundwater 3. Groundwater 3 standards are intended to provide some protection against migration and discharge of groundwater into surface water areas and aquatic organisms, just to be protective of that. In terms of groundwater 2, there have been exceedances of groundwater 2 values in one well on the BFI landfill. That's, I, there were studies done back in the early 2000s to determine how far those levels, the concentrations, contaminants were going off-site, or if they were going off-site. Those studies showed that there was no really migration of that off the BFI property. It was being isolated to that one little area. And basically, indoor air monitoring was done, monitoring of the soil and utility conduits, and no contamination was found close to the standard levels for GW2. In terms of, that's not to say there isn't contamination. This part, Phase One, is an unlined landfill. There's acceptance criteria. There's, you have acceptance criteria for soil. You have groundwater standards. And what we do is we take all that data that's been out there, and if you look at this particular slide, this is the slide showing all the sampling points. And I just think it's just, it's useful to show that there is almost, there's nowhere for contamination to hide somewhere, is what I would describe this slide. There are monitoring locations, soil gas, groundwater, surface water, sediment, to make sure that we have all the data to say, is there anything other than we need to do capping out here? And there has been some things we've done other than capping. There has been contamination that was in the man-made diversion ditch that was flowing down the diversion ditch towards Northwood Tupper Pond. As part of the city's efforts to do some repairs and maintain the water line, the sewer, I'm sorry, the sewer line out here, those sediments were removed. Some of that was contaminated. It went in the landfill. There was also areas where the man-made ditch there was contamination in the sediments. Those sediments were moved, and part of that ditch was relocated, and there were some wetlands areas nearby that had to be affected by that, and they were restoration, replication of those wetlands occurred elsewhere. And to establish a better, more useful wetland. Additionally, let's see, go to the next slide. As part of these studies, in the end, what we do, we do risk assessments, and they do it for human health, and they do it for ecological risk, looking at wetlands and surface water and aquatic organism. The last set of the study was done as part of the closure of the city's landfill in 2017, and that study confirmed the previous human health that concluded no significant risk, which is what the 2020 MCP standards are for hazardous waste site. And also, they did a, what, a more detailed ecological assessment, and they determined it's not posing an ecological risk. Again, that doesn't mean there's no contamination. There is, you know, a landfill this large, operating this long, in this area has, there is some contamination from this landfill. It's just not posing a threat, and there are no private or public wells down gradient. And the risks that have been out there have been evaluated, and some remedial actions besides capping has to occur. And the landfill will have to be continued to monitor for a minimum of 30 years, is what our regs, to ensure that that, those conditions don't change. And that is the end of my presentation.
Well, again, thank you for that information. And considering Council of Health, I have the last question on that. Council of Health, you have the floor?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, it's a lot to digest. I'll tell you that. You know, you spoke for almost 45 minutes and very interesting, very complicated. And the way you talk, we don't, you don't seem that our water, our water will be contaminated. And the stuff that you're bringing in, is it as, I'd like to say, as good as the last batch that you used, or is it a better soil than the last project?
Well, the acceptance criteria is different. So the acceptance criteria is stricter. The, and it's stricter because the assumptions, the, when you're capping a landfill, you're isolating it from, it's below those clean surface layers. There's a membrane that there's, you can't come in contact at groundwater, rainwater cannot come in contact with it. So the concentrations that are allowed to go for disposal are higher, the contaminant concentrations, which is allowed, than the concentrations of this project. These ones, there is, these are not solid waste. This is, these are soils. They can be reused safely if they meet the acceptance criteria for this. So the standards here are stricter, and that's one thing I wanted to be really clear, because these are not going underneath a landfill final cover system. Because they are going above the final cover system, the potential exposures long-term are higher, and therefore they need to be, you need to have lower concentrations of those constituents in the soils.
So the soils are better? Yes.
Yes.
Now, is there many places that you're drawing soil from at the same time, or is it one or two places? And does every truck that comes in, how do they, they check the truck out as well, or just the site?
Well, the, there's a sampling and analysis plan, and it requires that the soils be tested from every location it's coming from. So if it's coming from a parcel that is, and I'll just pick, you know, Norwood, it's coming from Norwood, then that is tested in a minimum frequency of soil testing, is usually, it can be anywhere from every 500 to 1,000 yards, 1,500 yards. The soil is tested from every facility individually. As Paul said, that since the advantage of this, if they decide to send soils that were clean, that were unregulated, to say that they could go to a gravel pit. If they want to come here, they have to be tested. And they have to be tested, just like all soils that come here have to be tested. That's what the COM 15 approach in standards and procedures lays out.
And those are the data packages that then are Q8, Qseed.
Yep, there is. So basically, the, there is a professional who looks at it, who, for the generator of the soils, from where it's coming. Then there is another professional who's looking at those soils, who works for the city or Fall River, the city or BFI, and they're evaluating those soil packages. And then, once they both say it's okay, then they have to submit that evaluation and that data, post, give it to DEP, which then goes on our webpage, which is some of those reports that Paul showed you that anyone can see. So that's what happens for every single soil package. It's always at least two people, two set of eyes are looking at it before it's okay to go in, and the department gets a third look at it.
What happens if it comes in, seems to be all right, but the city don't accept it?
Well, they, the acceptance criteria, they can decide not to accept the soils because it's their project. So they can be stricter if they want. There's also field screening. Sometimes people will do testing at the site of generation, and then the material comes in and people are like, well, they're looking at the data sheets going, this doesn't look right. Or they'll say, there's too much, there's, it looks like there's someone threw some solid waste in this. So there's, it's inspected when it arrives, and the data sheets have to match from each facility. So if the city decides, or the party overseeing it sees it, decides to reject it, they can.
And remember, there's an administrative consent order that pretty much guides how this is going to work. And if it doesn't work, there are potential, there's potential for enforcement and potential penalties. So that's all incorporated into the administrative consent order.
Does it happen once in a while, they're rejected?
Yeah, loads are rejected, and they have to, there are provisions in the consent order that they notify the department if loads are rejected. Some of the consent orders, if a lot of, if certain loads are rejected multiple times from certain parties, some of the consent orders have said that they have to cease accepting from that party until they get, until they figure out what the problem is. If you're rejecting multiple loads from some party, then there's, obviously, there's some miscommunication, or there's some problem with the data. Sometimes it's just miscommunication, and it may be that a driver went to the wrong facility. But that's what all these approaches, I mean, all these procedures put into place so that this doesn't happen. And if the driver's coming to the wrong facility, and that facility can't abide by the rules, then the operating, the facility, BFI or the city, they can reject it and bar them from coming back.
Well, if this goes on, goes along, how long does it take to bring all that dirt? Did you say five years?
The proposal is four to five years. That's what they say, and that's something that's, you know, that's what the public participation piece is. I can't, we don't govern how long it takes. We just decide what standards there are for acceptance of the soils. The community can have some input on the entire project, and the city as a proponent does have, you know, it has a much more of a say than sometimes, this is not a, just a private individual party coming to propose in the facility. This is a city and BFI partnership on one, on a one project.
What's the tonnage in one truck? What did they bring in?
It depends on the size of the truck. It can be upwards of, you know, 30 tons. But traffic is one of the questions, I think, that I heard earlier on. One thing that Mass DEP likes to see vetted at the local level. is tonnage and hours of operation. The, the BFI landfill, when it operated, took in 1,500 tons per day of waste. The transfer station operated by BFI, which is adjacent to this landfill, operates at 1,000 tons per day. That is something that could be discussed in terms, there are advantages and disadvantages on tonnage rates, the higher the rate you have, sometimes the shorter the project. The lower rate you have might mean less, you know, day to day impacts, but the project are stretched out. So that is something that could be discussed at the local level and we encourage those two issues to be discussed vigorously at the local level.
All right, well, you know, I'm learning, I'm listening and I'm just hoping for the benefit of the people of Fall River that we're not making any mistakes to make sure that the soil that's coming in is the right one. I guess that's your job to make sure. And it seems that you have a lot of safeguards in place. So, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's tough to us to say, you know, let's do it. We, we should have a guarantee, but we're never sure what's going to happen. But we have to move ahead, I guess that's what we have to do. But I appreciate you and everybody else that came tonight and to speak on this. And I'd like to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. And Councilor Pickham, you're on mute and you can have the floor.
If only we were always given a heads up when we're on mute. My one question is, isn't there a brook that runs close by to there that's been brought up in the past or questioned? I believe Mother's Brook is the name that it goes by. Does that run directly to the North Whituppa? I happened to notice in one of the PowerPoints, so it's actually noted on there.
Yeah, there is, there is, if you start at the industrial park that is on the southern side and there's Riggenback Road, which runs between, it's between South, North Whituppa Pond and the landfill. There is a diversion ditch, which is a manmade structure to handle stormwater from the industrial park. That flows into another series of ditches, which eventually turns into Mother's Brook, which was net, was there, that it was connected up long, long ago. Part of it was to allow a sewer line to go through there and part of it was to address stormwater. My understanding with the industrial park and having been involved in this site for a long time is that that ditch was put in specifically and Riggenback Road built up to prevent stormwater from the industrial park going towards North Whituppa.
Okay.
Mother's Brook, all of that goes to the northwest and goes underneath the highway 2479 and heads towards the Taunton River. So the surface water flow is the opposite direction. There has been, really the focus of the assessment in the later years of the landfill has really been on the wetlands and Mother's Brook into the diversion ditch, dealing with the sediment concentrations, the contaminants that were in there and how they were affecting the aquatic organisms in the wetlands.
I'd also like to offer that the Fall River drinking water program, drinking water system is a large system that serves over 50,000 consumers. And there are, they are subject to sampling and analysis of the, for the quality of the water that's being distributed, both federally through the Safe Drinking Water Act and also through the state regulations. One point that I asked Mark to double check on had to do with private wells and appears that there are no private wells in the area.
The closest private wells are over in Free Town. We always do private well surveys whenever we read, because it changes. So the assessment that evaluated in 2004 isn't going to be the same as 2017. We keep revisiting that. Those wells have determined to be hydrologically, they, they will not be affected. They're not down gradient, as we want to say, groundwater flow isn't in that direction.
Okay, so with that being said, let's take the drinking water out of the equation. So would it be safe to say that contaminants are being rerouted back, like you said, under 79 and 24 towards the Taunton River? Is that what I took from that?
Well, that's the direction of groundwater flow. So part in, yeah, all landfills have to be capped. And the purpose of capping those is to reduce the amount of contaminants that are going to get into groundwater and get into surface water. Capping reduces the amount of leachate, which is those contaminated material by about 99%. That's how effective those caps are. You can go from tens of millions of gallons of leachate downs to tens of thousands, you know, multiple orders of magnitude. As I said, that doesn't mean there isn't any contamination, there is contamination. That is in aquifer, phase one is online, operated from the 30s to the 1989, has been capped. And but that's why we do the assessment. We do the assessment to determine, is that level of, that's in the groundwater, in the surface water, in Mother's Brook, the sediments? Is that, does it need additional remedial action? The solid waste program is kind of unique in, in the way it addresses contamination in the fact that there's an assumed remedial action. It's always assumed you're going to cap it and then it's always assumed you're going to monitor it. At least for at least minimum of 30 years. So the idea is we're saying that, that we're not saying there's no contamination. We're just saying that contamination at this point doesn't require any further action other than monitoring. We call it detection monitoring. And sometimes we have some disagreements with people who want to, when they're doing the monitoring and they want to say, well, we've never seen this contaminant for 20 years. So we don't want to monitor for that anymore. And we say, no, it's detection monitoring, just because we haven't seen it for 20 years, doesn't mean we won't see it next year. So we keep looking and it's detection monitoring. So we're looking for things that are going to change.
Okay, I appreciate that, I do, thank you. With that, I yield Mr. Chair, thank you.
So I believe the, the questions on, on water and water supply has been answered. And I know that Millie, you've given, you've given me a phone number in regards to any citizens that have concerns on environmental justice concerns, right? So that, that, that number, you can give it now if you want to, but I know that you can also give the website as well for contact information in regards to that.
Sure, so my line is 508-946-2727.
And, and that's, that's to, that's to anyone out there listening and I, and I know that this was a very long meeting, but I think that this is going to be a, a person, a great reference for people to go to, not just for this specific site, but future sites going forward as well. There's a lot of information in this, in this meeting that I think was, when you, when you gave it to me over the phone, I felt it was valuable for the public to know about this as well, to answer any, any questions concerning the situation. The landfill conversation in Fall River has just been extensive and impactful. And I think it's, it's stuff like this, maybe if we had something like this years ago going on, maybe we could have avoided some of the problems that came our way. Mr. Step, and I, I'm sorry if I, if I mess up your name, Steph Kovich. It was said, it was said by Mr., it was said by Mark that local, on a local level, we have to be concerned about the traffic issues. What steps are being taken by the public in that regard?
Well, we, I, I did some little, I thought traffic issue might come up. You know, we have, you know, this is about a million ton project. I think you use 700,000 yards and when we convert that to tons, well, it's about a million ton project over four or five years. So assuming a five-year project, that'd be 200,000 tons. The trucks that handle this type of soil would have an average of say 28 tons of load, that would be about 7,100 truck trips a year and about just under 30 truck trips in a, any given operating day. So additional, you know, 27 to 30 trucks on Airport Road isn't really significant. And I think Mark Dakers also indicated that the landfill has a permit for 1,000 tons a day at the transfer station. So that in and of itself equates to about 120 truck trips in an, in an operating day, given the difference. So, but currently we're nowhere near the 260, the thousand tons a day. So collectively, at current volumes, this would be a combined of about 85 truck trips, which is significantly below the different, the, the existing kind of design capacity for trucks in that facility. So it, it's, it's, it's well below, I don't know if I made, explained that very well, but I'll stop and, and Mike, do you have anything to add on this subject?
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to mention that we did have that offsite waste project several years ago. And trucks carrying dirt, we're traveling up Airport Road every day. And it's just about the same amount of truck traffic with this project. That, that was, that project was about half the size of this. And this project will run about twice as long. And so the truck traffic should be pretty much the same as it was during, during that operational period of project. And as far as I'm aware, there were no traffic issues. These traffic, these trucks run on 24, get off 24 and immediately onto Airport Road. These are, you know, tractor trailers, they're not the residential right, these trucks that might be running up and down North Main Street. So we're going to be pretty much limited to Route 24. Perhaps they might go up Innovation Way.
They might go Innovation.
But that's it.
Okay, and actually, did you have Innovation Way during the past for, for that last one?
Do you recall, Mike? For part of it, yeah, certainly at the, certainly at the end, yeah.
Right.
So maybe having that there might actually make it even an easier route.
Yeah, because southbound will go there and northbound will probably go Airport.
Right, I actually, can I interject that? Actually, I'm hand, I'm handling an issue in the Public Safety Committee right now with that area in particular, with truck traffic. Is it possible if we are going to bring, actually, I have a question, if somebody can answer this. What time are these trucks going to start moving into the city? What time will they get into the city to deliver this, this soil? Does anybody have an answer for that? Is there a timeline? Hours throughout the day that these trucks will be delivering and, and dropping and then leaving?
It, it would be consistent with the, the permit operating hours. And so I, I think it's probably starts at six. And I don't think there'll be any trucks actually in Fall River proper, well, part of 24 is proper. But unless there's a, a point of origin, generation actually in the city, it's just going to be coming up and down 24 and accessing via the Airport Road or the Innovation. And if there's an issue in Innovation, you know, you, we could probably set up a, a, a procedure to only use one, you know, one way to come in Airport, for example.
Well, I think the issue is right now is that there's a lot of controversy with one of the resolutions, I'm sorry, one of the citizens complaints that was filed was using Airport Road, 8A, which would be Innovation Way, which now, since the state changed the signs, it could be exit 3001, I have no idea. I actually took the wrong exit the other day because I have no idea what these exit numbers are anymore. But I know we created 8A Innovation Way to alleviate the congestion of trucks into Airport Road. I think would be more conducive or more feasible if that access point was used rather than Airport Road. Airport Road leads right to a rotary, which is the main source of traffic for the north end of Fall River. I would just recommend while doing this and putting this into place, that 8A would be the main source of, of input, import or egress, ingress, you know?
I, I don't see an issue with that at all, I mean, most of the volume, you know, because it's, it's linked to commercial or redevelopment would probably be coming out of the higher population concentration areas to the north and coming south anyway. So again, I, and you're right, the circle is one point of complication there when you do get off of Airport Way.
Yeah, I just think using 8A or whatever it's called today would be a better source rather than going up Wilson Road or Riggenbach to, to access that site. That would be my, my concern at this point and I'm sure that could be worked out, that, that's an easy solution. With that, I yield Mr. Chair, thank you.
Just to step back for a minute, we actually mentioned operating hours in the documents that were provided to the DEP. And Monday through Friday, seven to four and Saturday, seven to one are the typical operating hours. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there'll be trucks waiting at seven o'clock. Usually, you know, they're loaded and then they'll head to the site, so.
All right, just one other thing, dump trucks, is that what we're talking about here? Just primarily?
Probably dump trails, the larger ones, that, you know, there will be dump trucks, there will be 10-wheelers. But I think it's primarily dump trailers.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, all right, so the third part of, we're going into now the, the Brayton Point part of this, which is basically the resolution path, the item three, which we did combine them together. So whoever wants to start that off with the Brayton Point information?
If, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll touch upon that and maybe.
Yep, you have the floor.
Add some light as to why I filed this resolution in the first place. The reason I filed the resolution with Brayton Point to question the the project that they have going on over there was, I, I'm just looking to make sure that Fall River is safe down the road. I'm not interested in Somerset's, what they're doing, that's their own town, we don't, we don't handle that. What I'm looking to make sure of is that Fall River is not impacted by that project down the road. That's it, that, that's all I'm looking for. If everything's being done safe and Fall River will not be impacted down the road, I'm okay with it. Again, though, if Fall River is impacted, I just want to go on the record as saying that Somerset is, is going to be responsible for whatever damage is done to Fall River. I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So Deep Mass DEP, whoever you want to start there?
Sure, so I, I thank you, Councilor, and I appreciate, you know, the spirit by which you filed that resolution. And perhaps what we will try to do is shifting gears a little bit perhaps, we were prepared to provide you and all the entire council with a presentation that the first part of it was generic, to kind of talk process. And then the second part was basically to illustrate at least in one or two slides, what we know with regards to contamination of Brayton Point. I will try to answer your question perhaps at the end. Let me just say that hopefully this presentation is applicable to any potential foreseeable future sites across the city as we try to reinvent and reuse sites and put them on the path of productivity. So if you allow for Mass DEP, we'd be happy to provide you with this presentation. And then we can try to put our heads together with regards to answering the fundamental question that you've raised. So basically, very quickly, because I understand, you know, it's almost eight o'clock and I'm sure, you know, it's a long day for everybody. But I will try to jump through this very quickly and then hand the, the baton over to Paul Locke Extraordinaire, Brownfields, creator of Brownfields program for South, for the Mass DEP. So as we know, for 50 years, Brayton Point Power Station served as a coal-fired power plant, Somerset. It was the largest coal-fired generating station in New England. The last coal-fired power station in Massachusetts to provide for the power to the regional grid. And all that ended in 2017. In 2018, Brayton Point LLC purchased the retired, the Funt Power Station for the purposes of redeveloping the site and then putting it back to defunct power station for the purposes of redeveloping the site and then putting it back to productive reuse. That's what we call Brownfields. Often we team with other entities, whether it's mass development. The cities, the US EPA Attorney General's Office for Covenants Not to Sue, to basically make that a reality. In this case, we have a private party that owns the three hundred acres of the waterfront property. And basically it has attributes such as a deep water port. So Mass DEP has not been formally engaged by this company to kind of sit down and discuss foreseeable future uses as it pertains to what will happen next at this location. I want to make sure that I'm transparent with that. But we do, however, have an assortment of releases, past releases that were notified to the department because it is a requirement of the state's cleanup law and the program that if you have a release to the environment that triggers certain notification requirements, they have to come to Mass DEP. So what we have told Brayton Point LLC is imperative that when you're seriously considering what is going to happen at that location in the foreseeable future, you have to be sure to consult with Mass DEP. Now, they could do it on their own. Paul is going to talk about the semi-privatization aspects, semi-privatized program nature for the cleanup program. But often parties that have large sites with potentially complicated and complex site cleanup. They visit or call or touch base with Mass DEP and we happily provide people, anybody, with guidance so we can get to a productive and protective reuse endpoint that is commensurate with the zoning. I'd be more than happy to talk to you after you listen to Paul with regards to his concerns and just what's happening at play right now in the interim. Certainly, certain uses, intermittent uses are taking place there. Master EP, we listen to complaints, we follow up on complaints. If there's something to be fixed, that's what the enforcement is for. And we have been working by way of issuing certain enforcement actions. Party is responsible for following up and ensuring that those actions are basically taken care of. So that's all public documents and I'd be more than happy to speak to that at the end of the presentation.
Has there been any oversight by DEP with the Brayton Point project? Communication between the two or no?
Not that, well, with regards to a formal foreseeable future use cleanup, the answer is no.
Okay.
So what Paul is going to talk about, he's going to show you a map where we actually have dots on that throughout, scattered throughout the site where there's been some level of cleanup associated with these releases across the site. But in terms of foreseeable future, sitting down and talking about what lies next, organized and coordinated approach in terms of we're thinking about doing this or the other option, that has not happened.
Okay. So to touch upon what you said, there has already been a cleanup or it, we're being proactive as to if there may have to be a cleanup?
There's been a cleanup of past releases. And Paul's going to show you all that. But in terms of one organized idea with regards to, oh, this is going to be a commercial center or this is, nothing of that nature has happened to date.
Okay. All right. I appreciate your time. Thank you, man. I yield.
Okay. The presentation, please.
Let me try bringing up my screen again. Okay, you should see the title slide, hopefully. Yeah, there we go. Okay, first, just a very, very brief overview of our, our waysite cleanup program to put all of the, the Brayton Point specific pieces into a little bit of perspective. And, you know, to boil it down to the simplest, three things that people should be aware of. One, our cleanup program is semi-private, semi-privatized. And what I mean by that is that we have licensed site professionals who are licensed by the state who are, have to be hired by the responsible parties doing assessment and cleanup in order to oversee the work that's done to make sure that they comply, they comply with the regulations. The, there are five hundred LSPs in Massachusetts. They have a lot of experience. They have continuing education requirements. And we're very confident that as a group, they, they know the regulations and the requirements very well. And it also gives DEP comfort to know that, you know, the LSPs are, are there and are consulting and providing input and directing the work being done at these sites. Mass DEP staff are then freed up to insert themselves at sites at critical stages where our input, we feel, well, would be beneficial, where it's needed in order to make sure things are done correctly. And we also conduct audits at different points throughout the work done at sites. So we have involvement in a number of different ways, ranging from direct oversight at particular points in the process to the audit program. We try to make, similar to what we talked about with the COM fifteen soils, we try to make this as transparent as possible. I, I personally believe that transparency makes my life easier and makes our job at DEP much easier. Again, as we talked about before, documents are submitted to the department through our EDP process. Within fifteen minutes, they're up on the web and people can look at it. So the, the public and the neighbors are seeing exactly what DEP is seeing at the same time DEP is seeing it. And I can show you how to go about and looking at that. There's a webpage called Find Out About A Contaminated Property In Massachusetts. That's a good resource to look at. And this is more, less fact and probably opinion, but I think it's fact that the cleanup program follows a certain logic. The regulations are very detailed and very technical because this is a complex process cleaning up hazardous waste sites. But each requirement is there for a reason to make sure that things are done in a logical way and that minimizes the chances that things are missed or things are done inappropriately. And we periodically review the rules to make sure that they are the best they can be at any given time. This is the simplest version I can come up with how our waysite cleanup program works. It starts with a trigger of notification either from a sudden spill or the discovery of historic contamination that might be on a property. And that notification triggers all of the processes and the deadlines in the work done under the Massachusetts contingency plan, which is a set of regulations that govern this whole process. If it plays out to its fullest, there are five phases that a site goes through from in the first year, some preliminary investigation and site history, putting everything in context through a comprehensive site assessment where all of the sampling of the soil and the groundwater and the air and the water, figuring out which way the contamination might be migrating, how it got there, what's there, what concentrations, who's being exposed, what the risks are. And at the end of that phase, there's a determination whether the site poses a significant risk of harm to health, safety, public welfare or the environment. If it does, cleanup is necessary. If it doesn't, they can stop there and get out, close out the site. Phase three is selecting the remedy that's appropriate and that can take into account a number of technical and financial feasibility issues to find out what eliminates the risk and can be done in a cost-effective and is technologically achievable. You design the remedy, you implement the remedy. Those sound very simple, but implementation of remedy, if it's something like a pump and treat system to address groundwater contamination, it's a remedy that might go on for many years. The, you note here, there's a T equals six. In general, there's a requirement that a site reaches some point of closure within six years, although there are provisions that recognize that complex sites and may require longer periods of time to come to a complete permanent solution. That's the overall process. There are things that happen throughout all of this. And if that's a simple way of looking at it, a slightly more complex version of that chart is this, and I only put this up here to provide a little, little bit of detail should anybody want to delve into it. Different types of notification, a lot of reports that come out and that would appear on the website as all of these phases are, are completed. And, and also I think one of the, the significant pieces at any point in the process that there's enough information to demonstrate that the site poses no significant risk, then they can move to closing out the site in a permanent solution. It's designed so that simple sites, simple releases can get out very quickly, can close quickly with quick and efficient response actions. But it's also flexible enough so that large, complex sites that require years of study and years of implementing remedies can also work through a similar system. So that's probably all I want to say about that mess of, of detail. The webpage, Find Out About A Contaminated Property. If you just Google Find Out About Contaminated Property In Massachusetts, you'll get this page as the first hit. This includes a lot more, a guide that provides detail about how our system works. It's a good first read if this is your introduction to the waysite cleanup program. There are some the most important thing, the, or the most popular thing, I think. The waysites reportable releases spills and look up, that's how you can actually go and look and see what might be in your neighborhood, what might be involved in a site. And then below that, there's a bunch of video, oops, videos and documents that provide more information about how to use it and how the system works. But I would highly recommend doing that and going there. And moving from there to Brayton Point. I, you may remember I mentioned something called Release Tracking Number, the RTN that you could use, look up the COM fifteen sites. And those documents, we use RTNs to track hazardous waste sites as well. Each release that is notified to us gets a unique release tracking number that can be used to see what's going on with that particular release. Here at Brayton Point, the DEP staff provided a nice little graphic that outlines some of the areas that have already been identified as releases to the environment and have already gone through the assessment and cleanup process. Some of these, the ones outlined in red and magenta, the purplish, these are areas that have been cleaned up to a less than residential standard, basically for commercial or industrial settings standards. And those have activity and use limitations or AULs attached to the deed for the property that specify what are the allowed, what contamination is left, what levels and what are the allowed and what are the prohibited uses for those. So those areas, from what we know from the cleanup and the residual contamination that is still there, those areas would certainly be clean enough for certain industrial or commercial uses. But it's not unrestricted use. And those are areas that if there's future development there, then that AUL and the documentation for the cleanup of the site would have to be referenced. Any soil that might be excavated from there would have to be managed appropriately. Make sure it goes to facilities that are licensed and approved to take that soil. So it's not quite out of the system. There are these continuing controls because there are some residual contamination left behind. The other areas, particularly the ones in blue, there are areas where the cleanup has gone to a point where those areas are consistent with an unrestricted use of the property. There is no activity and use limitation on them. Each of these areas are, have multiple release tracking numbers, so multiple releases had occurred there over a long period of time. Obviously, this facility has been there for, for quite a while. And you could look up each and every one of those RTNs on our website and find out a lot more detail about what has gone on there.
I missed, if I may. I'm going to go back to the cleanup that I had no, no idea about. Do we know what that cleanup was for?
Ah, good question.
Next slide.
Next slide. Instead of making you go through and pull up each and every one of those RTNs, the staff put together a handy table with these tracking numbers, the sites, with the RTN here, what the release was. So going down in this table here are those locations that still have an activity and use limitation that were cleaned up for a commercial industrial use. So you can see number two fuel release, oil, ash, fuel oil release, fuel oil release. We used to, we now use the term permanent solution and temporary solution to describe the closure documents. Back in the day, we used a term RAO, which stood for relief. Now I'm forgetting, Response Action Outcome. They say it's a permanent solution. It's the endpoint. So it had a Response Action Outcome that had an activity and use limitation, AUL. So there's a little bit of a description. And if these links are live, so you will have the presentation. So if you click on it, I wonder if this is actually going to work for me. I know because I'm, I'm actually in the presentation mode, but
I believe you.
If you were to click on it, it would bring up a table website similar to what we saw with the soils, where you could click on and look at the individual documents and, and see all the reports, what, what was released and all the documentation for the sampling that was done, the results and what the cleanup was for each of those. And the same for the, those release tracking numbers without AULs. So these would be cleanups that were done to allow for unrestricted use of the property. A lot of these, you know, were in fact, simple spills, simple releases. You can see a motorboat sank. Okay. They went in, they dealt with that in the canal. Hydraulic oil from a vacuum truck. So often a line, a line blows. A bunch of transmission oil or hydraulic fluid is spilled. It gets cleaned up very quickly. Essentially to background and gets closed out. That's something that would be closed out in a matter of days rather than six years.
How many, how many do we have here? Because you just switched screens. There seems to be quite a few and they're all oil or fuel related for the most part anyway.
Yeah, there are twelve on that, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen unique releases. And so that's what, that's what we know about. Those were cleaned up and they have an endpoint. A, a big property like this, if it were to be redeveloped, I would not be surprised if during further assessment and construction that, you know, other releases, other conditions might be discovered that would require further assessment and cleanup. That would not be surprising and there's a process that, that's in place for that to happen.
I'm so glad you brought that out because I want to be responsive to Council Peckham. So when I stated that we have not had any interaction, it means with the new property owner who purchased the property in, in twenty eighteen. So I would ascertain that once Mass DEP is, they call us and they say, okay, we have a, we're ready to go. There's a redevelopment plan in place. You, I would argue, very likely, we will see a lot of release tracking numbers or some tracking numbers that will be issued in response, or maybe just old tracking numbers that get tied into the new release, the new notifications that are incoming. But all this body of work is a reflection of past work pre-Brayton Point LLC.
Yeah, I'm actually noticing that. It goes back to two thousand five, seven, eight, nine. So since the new ownership took over in eighteen, you have not had any discussion with them whatsoever?
No, as it pertains to Brownfield's redevelopment, no.
Okay. I appreciate that answer. Thank you, man. With that, I yield. Thank you, Chair.
So I believe that is, that, that concludes our discussion. I know that these resolutions were based on discussion and information. On that note, I don't think there is any, any anything we have to vote on here, or I don't even think we have to table these. I think we're just good with the discussion and move on and thank, and thank Mass DEP for the presentation. I want to say it again. I said it offline to you, Mass DEP, to all the representatives and, and including representative from, the two representatives from Republic. I, in my experience, and it's, and it hasn't been extensive. I've not seen this much cooperation and coordination without a hitch. It was in information. This was a lot of information in a short span of time to put together. And I just And I just really appreciate that, and I'll be the chair for this subcommittee going forward. And I know that there's some other environmental issues in our city. So I'm looking forward to more meetings in the future regarding, you know, how we can try to get informed and react in a safe way in our community. So thank you very much again. Are there any last words that you want to say before you go?
I just want to thank DEP for, we have three people here, from, all three are from DEP, correct?
Yep, and then there's two from Republic as well.
I see that off screen. I would genuinely, genuinely like to thank you guys for coming. Like Council Lee said, it is great that we've had everybody come together, and a lot of information has transpired over the last two hours and 11 minutes. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity and clearly with so much going on right now and the importance of the environment, energy, climate. It would be our pleasure to come back and continue this dialogue on anything you need, any support.
Thanks.
And forward of this history with the landfill, as Council Pelletier pointed out, you know, it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of volatility there. So to be as thorough as possible was, I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, so my apologies to Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry and our other guests here. It's a lot of information there in a couple hours. I apologize for the long presentation. But we're gonna move on to resolution, I'm sorry, to item four. Colleen with the resolution.
Was filed by Council Linda Pereira. Whereas numerous trees throughout the city are being cut down by various city departments. And whereas the city has purchased a stump grinder, yet tree stumps remain to be an eyesore all around the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene the Director of Community Maintenance, Director of Cemeteries and Trees, and Representatives of the Board of Pop Commissioners and Urban Trees to discuss coordinating services for the removal of tree stumps throughout the city. It was adopted September 8th of 2020.
Okay, Mr. Perry.
Counselors, good evening. Madam Clerk, good evening. Thank you for having us. So as Council Pereira had mentioned earlier, this evening, we had a conversation about the tree stumps. I know this is a big concern of hers. Chris and I have been working actively and trying to come up with a solution on how we can get this, this tree stump situation under control. So as most things, we didn't get here overnight. It's been a long time coming where stumps have been adding up in the city. We've catalogued those stumps that we know of. There, it's quite an extensive list. So it is a monumental task to try to get a handle on it, but we're actively working on that. Some of the reasons aren't just that, you know, all the city departments or multiple city departments are cutting down trees, but you have things such as storms with downed trees, emergency takedowns due to unhealthy trees, things of that nature that we have to make sure we act on immediately. And unfortunately, there aren't, isn't a chance for us to get the stump immediately removed. That doesn't excuse the fact that we haven't gotten back and gotten those stumps out. We bought the stump grinder, I would say, about eight to 10 years ago. We try to get some staffing on that whenever possible. Unfortunately, as everybody knows, you know, staffing shortages abound in all departments. You know, we have a tree department, I think something that's important that the public knows, the tree department, as it's stated, consists of two positions, one of which currently is vacant and has been for a while. And then we have one other individual who constitutes the tree department. We backfill any tree services with cemetery staff. I think that's something not many people understand. It isn't an active department that's out every day working trees. The individual who is in the tree department works with the cemetery staff during the day as well, many times. So with that said, we spend a significant amount of money on private contractors to help us with our tree work. You know, thanks, thanks to the council. Last year, we had a significant amount influx into our budget to be able to do such work. Chris does a great job managing that, that money and getting the company to come in and do the work for us that we need done. We still have some funds left in that account that we anticipate fully spending before the end of the fiscal year. The tree companies that you deal with locally and anywhere for that matter, they generally have more tree takedown crews than they do stump grinder crews. The tree takedown crews are the more significant issue. So they dedicate more their manpower and equipment to that type of work. So what happens is the tree stump crews aren't always available. And when they do, it takes a while to chip up a tree stump. Depending on the, the age of the stump, how old it's there, the health of it. So some, some stumps you'll see are rotted, very easily ground down. Some of them are more significant, bigger, takes a little bit longer. So, I mean, if you have a bunch of rotted ones, I'd say you could probably do five, four, five in a day, six maybe, if they were all rotted. But when you have healthier stumps, you could only get at some points, maybe two or three. Our stump grinder is not the industrial sized stump grinder that you might see with a traditional tree company. It's a smaller version of what you'd see with a tree company. So we, we have to operate at a slower pace. So we may be able to take out a couple of stumps in a day. And at that pace, with upwards of, let's say, 400 plus stumps that we've catalogued so far, just ourselves, that would take quite some time. So what we've talked about is dedicating at least one day a month. I'd like to say one day a week or once every other week. But the reality of the situation is with the manpower and the way we have to manage it, I think one day a month is reasonable, where we can start hitting these stumps and trying to get them, them down and dedicate that day and make sure that we keep plugging away the list. Also with that, Mr. Perano has spoken with the tree companies that we use, and they have come to an agreement with us where they would reduce the number of men that they need on a tree stump crew down to one, where they would be able to provide that service for us more often. Whereas if they had to send multiple men with multiple trucks, it would take longer intervals between times that we would be able to schedule with them. With that said, part of that deal is that as a city, we'd have to collect what they, what they chip up. So traditionally, a tree chipping company will come in, they'll grind the stump down, they'll take all of the debris, they'll rake up, they'll get everything that they chip clean and removed. If we want to increase the, the frequency that we can get them in the company, then we're gonna have to help them with that. You know, I think we can definitely handle that. If, if a one man crew comes in and he's still chipping three or four trees, or three, let's say even, to go on the low end, so we're not promising things we can't provide, they can get three, three stumps ground down. I can put a crew together and have that crew chase those three trees and stumps and clean that mess up. So that'll increase the frequency of which, of which we can get them in the city to work with us. And it'll increase the number of trees that, excuse me, stumps that we can get ground down and move the process along. So we're actively engaged in trying to come up with a solution, and we continue to do that every day.
And thank you for pointing out the, the longtime mystery of how our government keeps on, our budget keeps on getting bigger and our personnel keeps on getting smaller. That's, that's something that is probably one of the biggest problems that we have in all departments. I, I had a question about the roots. A lot of people, and not just one or two, many, many people, especially in the downtown area, but I've had some, some residential, people who own residential properties as well, asking how are we handling these root problems that come from these stumps as well? You're seeing sidewalks, you know, uneven up and down the line. Is the solution to remove the trees or what are we gonna do there?
So, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the root issues with the trees that have come up are due to the fact that years ago, it wasn't taken into consideration the specific species of tree that was put in, the size that it would grow to, the root bed that it would be needed. And, and now, years and years of growth on that tree, you start to see the result of that, which is the sidewalks lifting up, roots growing into individuals sewer lines for their homes, and things of that nature. You have giant elm trees and maple trees that never, in my opinion, should have ever been put in that sidewalk. So what we've done, since we've had our Robertus contract for the last 10 to 12 years, is we've started to put into play guidelines for what kinds of trees can go in. So as you know, we have the Forward of the Street Tree Planting Program. We have our Robertus, and we, we have DCR in the city each and every spring and summer as well, or spring and fall, planting trees. But instead of what was planted years ago, now trees that are planted in the city in our layout, especially with sidewalk trees, they're trees that are specific to growth for that type of, that type of environment. So in essence, there are certain trees where the roots will grow down as opposed to spreading out. Some roots will grow vertical, these will grow down. So that'll be less of an issue for any kind of sidewalk problems.
What about roots getting into water, water mains or water lines and things like that? Have you had a lot of problems there?
Not only, not only do they grow down, but they're limited, and that was gonna be my next point, they're limited to the growth factor. So they will not grow a certain, to certain heights. So if you have power lines in the area, or you have lighting, lights, streetlights, whatnot, the tree will only grow to a certain point. It's that particular type of trig. They traditionally only grow a certain height. And that, that helps us keep a handle on that. So going forward, we don't continue to exasperate the problem of the roots that you see amongst, along the city.
Is there gonna be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the question to, to your point, as far as what do we do about the ones that are currently like that?
Yes.
Some of them pose a significant safety threat, so sidewalk is lifted up. It's a trip hazard, somebody's already gotten hurt, possibly where we paid out claims because of it. So what we do in those situations is we go to the, to the location, we take a look at the tree. We, we have been, now that we have the new concrete crew in the last three or four years, what we've been doing is we will remove the sidewalk from around the tree. We will box that tree root system out, and we will pour sidewalks around that. So we will basically increase the size of the tree, tree box that that sits in, and we will work with that. It's taboo, I think everybody realizes, to cut down a healthy tree. Sometimes it is required, and we have done it in the past. We try to.
Yeah, it's unfair. I mean, it's not something that we should have done in the first place, but unfortunately, now we have this, you know, this, this situation. But if people are getting hurt and it becomes a hazard, then we have to weigh that, you know, and start to think if maybe we should be replacing, you know, these trees with the other tree, that's gonna be a lot more safer for that area.
Yeah, no, and we have done that in the past. We have done that in certain spots. We assess each situation individually on a case by case basis. So when they come up, you know, Chris will go out and inspect the location, and then we'll discuss what the possible solutions are and what we feel is best in that particular case. Just like anything else, we have to vet every call and every complaint. As you understand now, after being on the council for a while, those calls come fast and furious, and sometimes they have merit, and sometimes they're exaggerated, and, you know, and sometimes they're spot on.
Do you have, do you have jurisdiction issues where someone may make a claim that, you know, a root or something is damaging their property? Do they, have you had any jurisdiction issues where you say, hey, the city's not responsible for this? You know, this is on your property. Have you had any issues like that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, that comes up quite frequently. And basically, what we do is we check the city layout. It's clearly laid out in our GIS system where we know the property boundaries, we know where our easements are. And if a tree lies within that easement, then, then it's our responsibility, clear cut. But if it clearly lies within the property owner's property, then, then that would, would be their, their issue unfortunately for them to deal with. I don't say that lightly, I don't say that with disrespect. I just, I just mean it as a fact.
What if, and this is my last question on this, what if a person bought a property before the trees were planted, and then the tree gets planted and creates problems?
Again, if it's in our city layout, if somebody wants to plant a tree outside their property, they need permission from the city.
No, if, I'm saying if the city did it.
If the city planted the tree afterwards, and it's in our layout, if it's in our layout, it's our responsibility, Council.
Okay.
Yeah.
To the, to my other two counselors here, you have any questions? Council Pelletier?
Yes, I talked to Mr. Perry this afternoon and listened to him tonight. I think he's absolutely right, and I think he's doing the best that he can with the help that he's got and the little chip that he's got. And I've called in on several trees. He helped out on some of them that were dangerous to the neighborhood. But the worst ones that I see, and he brought that up as well, is when the sidewalk lives up six, seven, eight inches. And I think that's an emergency because people trip on it. And I call you up on a couple, couple of trees that way, and I notice I forget the street, and it's still not fixed, but I'm not picking on you. You can only go so far and do so much with the help that you got. But it's nice that you have a plan to go out maybe once a month. It's nice that you have a situation with the tree cutters that they're gonna send one man to chop the tree stumps, and you guys will go there and clean everything up, and he'll do two, three a day, like you said. So that's a good thing. I mean, you're trying to make sure that these 400 tree stumps are gonna get done. And I'm sure you want them done before you retire. But you've got some time to retire, so maybe by that time you'll get them all done. So I think you're doing a good job. You just keep up doing what you're doing. And I'm glad Linda brought this up. It's been a problem, you know, sometimes you, you got the problem, you bring it up. She brought it up, she's absolutely right. You're doing the right thing, keep it up, and I'm with you.
Much appreciated, Counselor. Thank you. I just want to make sure Mr. Perano gets a lot of credit on this as well. He's been a godsend for me since he started. He handles, he handles a good amount of work, and he takes very good care of the cemeteries, and he's very responsive with the trees as well. So I couldn't do without him. So I just want to make sure that he understands that as well. And to your point, Counsel, I just want to make sure you all know, you know, as we know, budget season's coming up. So as we have those debates, which I know are gonna be difficult as always, especially this year, let's just consider putting that money in that, like we did last year for trees, right? So we have to continue to invest if we want to continue to make progress. So I just, I just want to throw that out there.
So my apologies to Mr. Pereno. I kind of went right into the, to the counselors. Mr. Pereno, do you have anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
Sure, that's okay. First, it is a team effort. It's not just me, it's not just John, it is the crew back at the cemetery as well. Just a little bit operationally, we do have, you know, the exact number is 493 stumps. We've catalogued the entire street tree, city tree, tree inventory. Everything south of Valentine has been categorized and catalogued. We do have upwards of 500 trees that do need to be removed. They've been identified for removal, so that's gonna add to some of those stump issues. But operationally, we tend to address the significant safety issues first, constituent calls and complaints second, and then tackle the list of the other items as we have time. So a lot of the money has been spent on tree removals and stump removals, and we're working through that list as quickly and diligently as possible.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Peckham?
I would just like to again echo both your sentiments, especially Counsel Pelletier's phenomenal job. You guys worked with the skeleton crew COVID the past year. I know we haven't been able to get to everything, but we are trying to address issues that are relevant within the city. These stumps, apparently, how many did you say, Chris? I'm sorry, 500?
493.
Yeah, it's a lot, and we're not expecting it all done in one day. We, trust me, we know you guys are working on it diligently, and we, we respect that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel.
I really do, and I know the rest of the council does as well, so thank you.
Counsel Pelletier, go ahead.
More questions? Anybody can answer, Mr. Perano, Mr. Perry. All the stumps that are being taken out, are you putting new trees in right away, or you cemented them?
Well, depends on the location, Counselor. So we have ground down stumps before, specific to a tree planting. So in essence, a resident may have had a tree outside their house. That tree was unhealthy, it was taken down. So in essence, uh a resident may have had a a tree outside their house. That tree was unhealthy. It was taken down. Um but they they wanted a new one planted. We'll work with the Forward of a Street Tree Planting Program or D C R to try to help them make that happen. Um otherwise, if we remove a tree, um grind down the stump. Uh and there there's no reason to put a tree back or the resident doesn't want it, then we will send our concrete crew to that location and repair the sidewalk.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, we've been, we've been working closely with Mr. Perry and the concrete crew to make sure that we're coordinating those efforts. So. Um we're removing the stump when they're actually going to be replacing the sidewalks in a certain neighborhood. So that way, um it's it's done timely.
Correct. Now, if we amp up, if we ramp up, sorry, uh the the removal of the stumps and the concrete crew for whatever reason can't get there. Uh the plan is to backfill that that void in the sidewalk uh with some other material, whether it be loom. Um you you know, if it's a if it's a a planting that's not in a sidewalk layout, we'll use loom and we'll make sure that at least the void is filled. And if it's in the sidewalk layout, uh then we'll fill it with asphalt or whatnot, stone dust if we have to, uh just to make sure the void doesn't remain.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think the appropriate thing, because this is an ongoing uh situation, that we may have to have a discussion down the road. Or or maybe a new subcommittee may wanna have this discussion down the road again. I think the proper um move would be to the table.
Actually, Counselor Lee or Chairman Lee, I apologize. Um since my resolution was addressed and D E P is well aware of uh our concerns. I would like to make a motion to leave to withdraw from the table. That way it's not sitting in environmental. And from here on out, we uh we just monitor. And if there's an issue, I have no problem filing another resolution.
So you're saying leave to withdraw the tree stump?
No, I'm sorry. Leave to withdraw my my resolution on brain and points since uh resolutions are.
Well. Your your resolution was just a discussion, so it's it wasn't tabled. It's just, it's all set. Um but we, I mean, you know, maybe, I mean, I don't, I don't.
Sit there with nowhere to go. Um I addressed what we addressed what needed to be addressed. I just don't want it sitting there and uh maybe Madam Clerk could help us uh.
The resolution, the discussion was held, so the resolution was fulfilled. There's really no need um would be removed from the committee. As it was.
Excellent, thank you.
Um so in regards, I I I would like to get a um. Uh I'd like I'd like to get this this uh item four tabled, if possible. Okay, can I get a second?
Second, that absolutely.
Roll call?
On the motion to table, um item number four, the resolution, Counselor Peckham?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um so now back, uh we're gonna be continuing with uh Mr. Perry here. Can I get a motion to uh take item five off the table?
Together.
Second?
Second.
All right. Um yeah, roll call.
On the motion to lift from the table, Counselor Peckham?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so this this is a uh, this is, this is again gonna be one another one of those ongoing conversations. Um but um the the main thing that, the main reason why I wanted to have uh this conversation uh today. Um I just wanted to get an update on uh on the composting situation. And I know that I presented in the last uh meeting uh the uh the conversation of anaerobic digestion. And because we had some questions, I don't, you know, I I feel like there was a, you know, some political stuff involved in it, but. Uh campaign promise conversation, but I really do think there were some valid questions in that um in that input. About how people can get barrels and things like that. Um and it just so happens that back in August um twenty twenty. Uh August thirteen twenty twenty meeting, if anyone wants to go back to that and reference it. I'm even going to uh put the minutes of that meeting in uh the documentation for this meeting. And um if I if I if people can see that, there's a a poster that was given to me in that meeting by Mr. Perry. Um it's backwards uh according to Zoom, but this would be the barrel and it's twenty-five dollars. Um we had a lot of conversation about the twenty-five dollars as well. It's pretty much standard all the way across the state. Uh for anybody that is doing composting, um it's a one-time uh fee, or it's a one-time buy. And um and then for me, that's for people who are interested in composting. I think that um I brought this all up again back then. That what Cambridge did, and Cambridge is what I would like to get us to. Uh that was about a four or five-year process for Cambridge. We're in, we're in the very infant stages of all this. Um but they started with the home composting and um they had a, they had a population that was active and and getting involved in and composting. To the point where they could um upgrade it to a curbside pickup and and things like that. So during uh my research last year, I pulled up a lot of documentation. This documentation will be uh given to uh the clerk. For for anyone who wants to in uh uh take a look at this, but there's a list here of the places that are composted right now. And there's a yes and no and all this and that. The only, the only city that is actually composting or town is Cambridge. Uh for curbside. They have the biggest curbside program and they have extensive information as to how they go about it. Now, I don't wanna go too far into it again, uh because it this was a very extensive, uh this was a lot of information. And we had a long meeting tonight already. But what I wanted to mention is that they also are taking their food waste. To towards anaerobic digestion. So there there is precedent that I'm talking about here. This is not just me. Uh bringing up stuff that, you know, shooting for the stars. We could do something like this, but it's gonna require. Uh an effort of 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 advertising, just as it was mentioned in the uh in in the citizens input. There's gonna, there's gonna take an effort for advertising. There's gonna take an effort to uh to get the word around, to let people understand that this is not just a benefit for the environment. But it could be ultimately a benefit for the community. Um just reading off this and then I and then I promise I won't go too far into it. Um currently, the city, and this is Cambridge, hauls food scraps and compostables to the new centralized organic recycling. Eight uh uh recycling facility in Charleston built by Waste Management in partnership with Save That Stuff. So. There's a lot of collaboration. There was a lot of um talking to other towns and cities and programs that would, that wanted to do this effort. And the result of that is uh the food is processed using anaerobic digestion at the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District in North Andover, Mass. As a result, trash has declined nine percent in the first four months of the program. Prior to the launch of the citywide composting program, it took six years for Cambridge to get to that point. So this is not something that I can just snap my fingers and, you know, do the campaign thing. This is something that has to really take. Uh real effort from from everyone involved. I feel like I'm doing my part by getting this information out there, but obviously I'm not gonna be able to do this alone. Um it it does, it takes, it takes a a comprehensive effort to do. I think what happened and and it definitely. Definitely happened last year. And John, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but. I believe that having a uh nationwide pandemic and a lot of shutdowns and a lot of. Uh school closings and things like that, or at least uh school from home stuff, really kinda put a hamper in the plans that we had. After August thirteenth. Am I wrong on that? Or would you say that that's an accurate thing?
Um so let's, i- i- if if you don't mind, I think we'll just address the compost piece first. I think that's the quicker of the two. Uh anaerobic digestion is is quite a topic and I'm not sure how far you wanna go down that road, um but we can definitely touch on it and and. Think like you said, that's a long process. So where we're at right now, um I don't think it'll leave me that much of a of a conversation tonight, but we can definitely. Definitely get to the point where where we are and where we have to go. Uh but as far as the compost, you're right. Uh we did make that presentation. I provided the information. Um couple of points to to Mr. Dias's uh letter, uh which I thank him for and 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 I see how socially conscious he is. And, you know, I appreciate that. Um and when we put that forward, first and foremost, it's, I just wanted to be clear that. We did not spend city funds on on the compost bins that we bought. Uh those bins were purchased from our recycling dividends program. Uh those are, those are monies that we earn from Mass D E P based on services we provide to our residents. Um you get a score each year. You submit your your request for R D P funds. Um each point is worth i- i- each each each, uh I'm sorry, service that you provide to your residents. Um is worth uh a point and each one of those points is worth four thousand dollars. Um that adds up. You get your score and they multiply that by the dollars and and that's how you get your money. This year, we received thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars from the Mass D E P. And we put that in an account and we can spend that money down on anything that has to do with reducing solid waste. Or increasing recycling. Uh and so those funds are very important, invaluable.
And and is there a, now, when we talk about advertising to to the community, I know for a fact and and maybe you disagree with me. I know for a fact that we have not really maximized that uh to our best ability right now. Would you say that that's true?
Yeah, and and again, I I there's there's another point to that 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 I'll go. So with the compost, we we did not spend the money. Uh out of the city budget, operating budget. Uh these were R D P funds that we earned. Uh so we, I figured. You know, like you said, Cambridge, I think we have a little bit of a different demographic than Cambridge, right?
Obviously.
So we have to educate our residents. We have to see what the appetite for a composting program is. You and I have talked about this. Um so I wanted to start small. I didn't wanna spend a a a a big chunk of my R D P funds on something that may not pan out. Uh so I purchased a hundred of them, um figuring, let's see how fast those hundred go. We can order them. They're very quick. They're always in stock. Um we put the price to it, which was consistent with other communities.
Right.
Um and and not unlike other times and other things we proposed, uh there was a little bit of outrage from certain, certain sectors of the population or public. Um some public officials uh that maybe we shouldn't be even charging for them. Um but I I think, you know, again, thi- this is an attempt to increase revenue. We've talked about a- a- at at stages. We need to find revenue sources to help us cover our costs. Uh so I think just giving things away uh at this point is counterproductive. I felt and I feel, I still feel, twenty-five dollars is a reasonable, reasonable one-time fee for a compost bin.
I agree.
And and and, you know, but the the conversation stalled at that point. Uh once there was a back and forth as whether we should, whether we shouldn't, I kinda got shelved. And unfortunately, um the co- the compost program hasn't taken up. Uh if if one of the counselors would like to put in a resolution where we can, you know, say, okay, you know, uh council's on board. Uh and and we're gonna, we're gonna sell these these compost bins. Uh I'd love to put it out on public access TV, W S A R, uh provide information for the public on how they can get them. We have them in hand. They are ready to go. So.
And this is one of the reasons why I feel like this has to be uh an ongoing discussion that we'll eventually table and and continue on because.
Yep.
Um that information that you're giving me, it sounds like there's a, you know, there was another element to this that didn't get to this part of the conversation, you know? Um and and that's unfortunate because um a lot of people, you know, depending on where you come from, we're supporting, we're supporting purple bags, right? Same people that are saying twenty-five dollar barrels is a lot of money, which it's not, um is we're supporting purple bags, you know? And so it's a, it's not really a matter of, to me, it's not really a matter of how much something is. It's a matter of. How often do you have to pay for it? To me, this is a one-time thing and then it's over, you know? Um that's the way I looked at it. Um but, you know.
Well, then not only that, Counselor, I mean, I think you really have to look at the long-term implications, right? So one-time fee for a resident um that pays twenty-five dollars for that compost bin, a- a- you know, if that's a taxpayer, right? So as everybody understands, our tax dollars pay for our disposal costs, our contract fees, okay? So if a resident spends twenty-five dollars on a compost bin, uses that compost bin regularly, religiously. Um how much of that waste is going to be removed from our tonnage?
Absolutely.
The life of that compost bin, how much money is that resident going to save us?
A lot more than twenty-five dollars. A lot more. And and that's, and and I meant, we, this is exactly the conversation we had in August last year. Exact conversation. So I I'm glad that we're having it again, but there is, in my opinion, it's a, it's a low-risk, high-benefit factor. If if Fall River can start to get a a consistent composting going on, I'm not a, and you know how I am about fees and and this and that and the other. I actually don't even have, I'll I'll pay twenty-five dollars for my own, you know what I mean? So I don't, I'm okay with all this. It's like. This is a one-time thing that's gonna save you money in the long run, as opposed to, and again, I don't wanna go too deep into the purple bag conversation, but. We didn't have a measurement tool unless unless we didn't, I'm wrong. We didn't have a measurement tool to talk about how uh. Restaurants and 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 stores had to take their their barrels off their off their lots. Because people were putting trash bags in them during purple bag days, you know, or Flint Street, how they had trash bags hanging out of their uh. Out of their, you know, out of their sidewalk trash uh trash bins. You know, I I saw it. I mean, people did see it. But it's not measurable. So that's something I can bring to you and say, hey, one point five tons of this was going on. But I do know that there were some benefits to the purple bags from a monetary standpoint. I'm not ignorant to that. It's just that overall. I don't think that the impact was beneficial. I I and I'm just always gonna hold on to that, you know? Um but with composting, it's almost a no-brainer. It's almost a, it's almost a no-brainer that this would save. I'm not saying it would save to the point where we would have all our problems solved. I I I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that. But it will save us some tonnage and some costs. And the, if you put twenty-five dollars into it, you're gonna get your twenty-five dollars back immediately. That's the way I look at it. So um so that's, that's where I land on that and that's the discussion I wanna have. And I'm I'm obviously gonna open the floor to my counsel uh colleagues. Um but.
If you don't mind, I just wanna make one quick point. Again, as you said, we don't wanna go too far down the road. I just wanna point out a a s- a statistic that I think. People need to be aware of.
Yep.
Once the program ended, uh the pay-as-you-throw program. Um uh we were averaging with the program about fifteen to seventeen hundred tons of trash per month. Okay, that was our average and it was consistent, anywhere between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. Uh since the program has ended and almost immediately after the program ended, uh our tonnages went up. Uh to two thousand to twenty-two hundred ton per month. Okay, so that's an increase of five hundred to seven hundred ton per month. Um at a hundred dollars per ton, it's easy enough to do the math. That's fifty thousand dollars a month. Increased disposal costs immediately once the program ended. Um that, you know, and I'm not gonna sit here and 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 debate for or against it. That's just a simple statistic that I think people can look at. And really kind of put it into perspective, uh and I'll leave it at that.
Yep. Um in regards to uh. And in regards to another thing too, I um and this is just me uh asking a question and it is pertaining to um revenue. Are we able to sell extra barrels to residents who want to buy them?
No, Counselor. Uh again, the intent is to reduce tonnage.
Right.
Without a, without the revenue generating streams, honestly, um we have to focus on reducing our tonnages.
Um yep.
So if you, the more barrels you pass out, the more tonnage that you're generating. Uh and and it's simple as that. Um those guidelines and the numbers of totes that residents have and each resident residential property maintains. Are standard with uh D E P regulation, not regulations, but guidelines and and recommendations. Uh that's what we followed when we implemented the plan, when we implemented the the cart program. Uh we went with their recommendations and guidelines, and that's what each resident gets. Uh and and it was a lot easier in the beginning when recycling, the recycling market was in a good place. Uh we would just continue to push recycling. You know, we tried to get people to recycle. The more they recycle, the easier it was for for them to fit i- their trash in their their carts. But no, we don't sell.
So I have a constituent that has been asking me if he could buy a barrel, an extra barrel. Um what what would, what what advice would we be able to give to him? Just to to privatize and get a a small dumpster or something to that nature? Do we provide a dumpster at all?
We we don't. We don't. Uh we had looked at that when we did the cart program originally. Uh we had some dumpsters. Uh for the bigger properties that, you know, the six tenements and, you know, even some of the larger four tenements, if they, if they so choose or chose to have that. Uh the problem with the dumpsters for us is um not a lot of properties have that kind of rule. Uh number one. Number two, it's tough uh in a residential property to get a truck like that in there that loads with the front forks. Uh so we don't do dumpsters. Um what I try to suggest to residents that that do this and and believe me, anybody who's dealt with me calls the office. I work with everybody as best as I can to try to help them out. Uh some people just want an extra barrel, uh and that's not feasible. Uh some people call and they say, you know, we're a single-family home. Yes, we have the the right number of totes. Uh but we still can't fit it. It's my wife, myself, uh we have four children and my mother-in-law lives with me. Um you know, that's a lot of people in one, in one residential property. So a lot of the guidelines are, single-family homes get sixty-five gallon carts. Uh tenement houses get ninety-five gallon carts. So in a situation as that, using that as the example, what I would work with that resident. Are you recycling, maximizing your recycling? Are you, are you filling that recycling cart with clean recycling as best you can? That will reduce however many bags per week.
I opened them a twenty-five dollar composting barrel too.
Right, if that resident is doing that, right, Counselor, if you had a composting bin, you you gotta reduce another bag possibly per week.
Right.
If that, if that resident's doing everything they can to recycle and maximize their recycling and save space in their trash bin, and it's still just not working. Um then I will work with them and we have in the past and and will in the future and under the right circumstances. I will swap out the sixty-five gallon cart for a. I will swap out the sixty-five gallon cart for a ninety-five gallon cart, that will give you enough room for an extra two, maybe three, depending on how full the bags are, uh, and we'll work with them on that, but we do our due diligence, be sure of that. Uh, if they're in- ensuring me that they're recycling correctly, I will have my compliance officers go by that address on their next trash day, check the recycling, make sure that this individual who's telling me they're doing the right thing and recycling correctly is doing that, and if we find that that's the case, then, you know, and that they're true to their word, then I will work with them, and I will, I will have a ninety-five cart.
Would you be, would you be open to con- uh, into a contact with some of the constituents that come my way on this topic?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay. And, and my last, my last question on, and I promise I'm, I'm gonna give it to the colleagues, and then we'll be moving on to this, um, my last question on this is if a person wanted to purchase a barrel and couldn't, but would there be a way to offset the to- cause you said you wanna reduce the tonnage, would there be some way that if they really wanted to, they could offset the tonnage with of, some type of extra fee or something to that nature?
Well, again, that's part of a discussion that's ongoing now, right?
Yeah.
You, again, there's, there's the evil word, right, fee, fee, bag, um.
Well, this wouldn't, this would be a voluntary thing, not, not being imposed on them, but if, if you said, hey, this is how we could do it, and that they say yes or no, it's in their hands, you know?
I, 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 I get that, and, and, you know, unfortunately, Counselor, when you really think about it, and again, you have to be practical. So if I was to charge a, a resident a specific fee, let's say it was, what would you say would be fair, ten dollars a month for an extra cart, let's say that, okay?
Okay.
That is an example.
Hmm.
That's ten dollars a month, that's a hundred and twenty dollars a year, correct? That one cart, over the course of the year, fifty-two weeks, is going to generate much, much more than a hundred and twenty dollars worth of trash to dispose of.
Okay.
So again, the more carts we put out there, even if we, we charge the fee, uh, we're not gonna cover our costs for disposal of that cart trash, the trash that's put in that cart and that it generates for the course of the year. Uh, and if we're being practical and we're just trying to save money and reduce costs, that's just gonna increase our costs.
It's a value discussion, you know?
Yeah, no, no, I get it, you know, I get it, we, we wanna work with people, we wanna help them, we wanna come up with solutions that are gonna make it work for them. Um, we just, I, I think people, we need to, we need to help people, we need to educate them, I think that's key, like you said. And we're working on that, and I have some points on that that I'll lay out to you, but I think what we need is we need to educate people, and we need to, to ask people and see people be responsible uh, with what they're putting in their cart, what they're putting in curbside, the days of, you know, uh, you know, you just throw what you want in the trash and it doesn't matter, cause it disappears. Those days are gone, people, we need to really ask people to be conscientious about what they're doing and how they're disposing.
Yeah, we're way, way, way behind the bar in that, how can, how can we as a city, uh, generate more of that EPA, uh, funding?
Well, you know, again, so let's take for instance, when we disbanded our compliance division, um, you know, you receive a RDP point uh, for having a compliance division that's in place, a- and is out there inspecting and, and issuing fines and, and, and dealing with, um, uh, with, with, with what the, the rules and the regulations are and enforcing those, so if you have an enforcement division, that's a point in itself. Um, so it's things like that, um, and the more things that we do, the compost program, that will get us another point. Um, a textile program would get us another point, um, you know?
What about, what about cleanup, what about cleanup, uh, organized cleanups?
Organized cleanups, we already get a point for that, so that is one of the questions, does your community engage in at least one or more community cleanup per year?
Does it have to be city-run in order to get that, or could it be voluntary from the city, from a, from city res- residents?
Uh, that would have to be city-run, Counselor.
Okay.
All right, so yeah, a, a community group putting it together, uh, the DEP wouldn't look at that as the city uh, really, um, you know, taking the onus to keep, keeping things clean and help the environment, that would be a private organization. DEP wants to see us as a city, um, putting the onus on, on our people and ourselves to make these things happen.
Okay, all right, thank you, uh, uh, Councilors, uh, Councilor, uh, Peckham?
Yeah, just a one question, uh, Mr. Perry, if you don't mind, is there, we can get a list of, of what brings those points? Because I, I didn't know about it until tonight, and I, I'm not as educated as Counselor Lee on the environmental aspect of this.
Yeah, no.
Maybe get a list.
Provide, I can provide you with the, the RDP application, I can even make you a, a copy of our last application and our last award letter, that will show you exactly what we, we s- we applied for and what we received.
That'd be fantastic, thank you.
Co- Counselor, you give, uh, give the floor?
I, I do, I yield, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Pelletier?
Well, you know, it all turns out that people of Fall River, you can complain about your taxes, complaining about anything you wanna complain. And if you don't do the right thing, and you keep doing the wrong thing, if you don't separate, you don't divide the stuff, it causes more money, more money, and, uh, more money is more taxes. Uh, people are crying now about taxes, the bills just come out, and there's only so much we can do, we have to get rid of this. And, uh, Mr. Perry's got it right, you do the right thing, it's gonna cost you less, and maybe the taxes will go down a little bit. You don't do the right thing, you gotta have the money to pay these guys to get rid of the, the trash, the rubbish, that's it. And, uh, that's, that's the way it goes, you don't pay attention, you'd be paying more and more taxes to get rid of your product, and that's the bottom line, with that, are you?
I'm glad to see Councilor Pelletier and, uh, and, and Mr. Perry getting along today, it's nice.
Always get along with Councilor Pelletier, always, always respect.
Absolutely.
All right, um, I would like to table this as well, um, can I get a motion?
Uh, motion to table, absolutely.
Daggit.
All right, motion is made, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, roll call.
On the motion to table, Councilor Peckham?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, can I get a motion to, oh, wait, no, you got one more.
Don't forget your minutes, Counselor.
Don't forget my minutes, um.
Nice to see Mr. Perry's on top of things.
On top of everything.
With that, I'll yield.
Um, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion right.
Second.
Motion, motion to approve the minutes?
Yes. Yes.
Councilor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, can we get a motion to dismiss?
Motion adjourned.
Second, and a motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
On the motion to adjourn, Councilor Peckham?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes. Right at nine o'clock.
Thank you, guys, for a very productive meeting, I appreciate it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.